Good evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Planning Board. Notice that this meeting is published in the local papers and also posted in the lobby of this building. We are being broadcast live on Channel 34 and streamed live on montclair.peg.tv. As a reminder, this meeting is a quasi judicial proceeding, meaning that we have the powers and procedures that resemble a court of law. And we are obligated, under the law, to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis for an official action. Any questions or comments that occur during this application hearing should be limited to the issues of what the Board may legally consider in reaching its decision. And decorum appropriate for a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Please be advised that this is a continued hearing. And tonight's testimony, we anticipate, to be solely coming on direct testimony from the applicant, of the applicant's witnesses. And with respect to those witnesses, when the attorney is finished providing the witnesses' testimony, the members of the Board will have an opportunity to ask that witness questions. And after that, members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to ask that witness questions. We're reminding you that this is not the time that the public makes a statement or a comment about the testimony, but this time is exclusively supposed to be for asking questions of the witness with respect to items that they testify to this evening. At the end of the application, there will be time allotted to the public to provide opinions and to provide their views of the application in general. It is not anticipated that we will reach that phase of the proceeding this evening. Based on what I know right now, that may change as the evening progresses, of course, but based on what I know now, that is how we're going to proceed this evening. I might also remind the public that because we are constrained by the rules of the municipal land use law and the regulations that come under it, we are only allowed to consider items that are placed in evidence and testimony that are given during this proceeding. There are members of the public who have written emails to members of the Board, myself included, and we are not allowed to consider those emails. So if you want your opinion to be heard, it is necessary for you to come here in person and place your opinion on the record. And sending an email to the Board or to the Planning Office or to members of the Council is not the effective way to make your opinion heard. With that said, this evening, we'll proceed first with the roll call.
Chair Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Brodak is excused. Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Counselor Schlegel?
Here.
Ms. Willis is excused. Mr. Rooney?
Here.
Ms. Lockman?
Here.
Mr. Barr? He's not here. And Mr. Gilmer?
Here.
Okay. I'd like to point out that we have Mr. Bob Munoz?
Yes.
Munoz here tonight on behalf of Mr. Galvin.
And we hope Mr. Gilmer feels better. We understand that he's injured himself somewhat seriously, and we hope that he makes a speedy recovery. Next up, we have the minutes from our October 22 meeting.
I believe comments on the minutes were distributed by Vice Chair Brodak and Ms. Lockman and Mr. Gilmer. There was a question that was brought up on page two of the minutes, first full, well, second paragraph, at the end of that where my minutes include a statement that Mr. Webb stated that approximately 90 trees will be planted in this area, which should actually be plantings. I did listen to the recording. It was 90 plantings, okay? And at the last sentence in there, Vice Chair Brodak stated that, in that case, a green screen is not necessary. I had it written down in my notes, but I listened to the recording and I couldn't find it, so let's just strike it from the minutes. Okay? Any other changes besides those that were distributed? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Some move.
Some move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Next, we have the minutes from our November 5 meeting.
We did not receive any comments on those minutes.
Seeing as how it's one of the shortest minutes in history.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
All right. And that brings us to our main item of business this evening, the application of Lackawanna SPE LLC. Counselor.
Before you get into that, just for some further clarification, because I've been contacted by some people in the public and some members of another commission, could you just describe what you believe will be the schedule for objector comments or other commentary and when the public would likely speak? Just if you could broad strokes that a little more for people so they have an idea. I know it's hard to do, obviously, since we don't know the...
Well, you know, as we've stated at the beginning of the past few meetings now, once the applicant is finished putting in all of its proofs and testimony, objectors will then have the ability to provide evidence in formal objection to the application. And without getting into the details of that too deeply, this formal objector is somebody who has more than simply just an opinion that differs from what the applicant does. The formal objector can be represented by counsel, is expected to present evidence and testimony that are based on items that are other than that individual's opinion. If someone objects and merely only has their opinion about what their objection is and how they view things, then the time for them comes after the formal objectors when public comment is allowed. And that is the last instance in which we will hear from the public. And after that public comment is made, the applicant will have the opportunity to sum up based on what evidence and testimony they presented and to offer their view on how all that comes together for the Board to make a determination. The main difference in how an objector presents and how someone who wants to make a public comment about their appearance is that in addition to presenting evidence, that objector is also subject to cross-examination by the plaintiff's counsel. If you're merely stating your opposition and the reasons why you oppose, and you're not presenting formal evidence, but rather your own opinion and testimony about that, then that is not subject to cross-examination. The procedure as to how it unfolds so far as timing, that's the general timing, as to what meeting that's going to occur to is a guess at this point, because the length of the proceeding is determined not only by the presentations, but by the questions that arise from that presentation and the discussions. And as we've seen time and time again with this application, discussions have, and questioning has, developed far in excess of what we thought it would. And that's why we're still continuing to hold these hearings. So I can't tell you when we will get to the presentation of formal opposition. At this point in time, we're aware of at least two formal objectors who wish to present testimony and evidence to us to consider. And that's, when we get to that step, is all going to depend on how long it takes for the witnesses that the applicant has left to present, how long it takes to get their testimony in, and all the questions answered that arise in connection with their testimony. That's the best I can tell you, and you have to kind of follow us and stay tuned if you want to, you know, keep up with everything.
John, can I ask you a question as well? In our package, we had a memo from the HPC.
HPC is different in terms of their providing written opinions to the, since they are a organization, a formal organization within the township. They are a consultant body to the Planning Board. We do value their expertise in historic preservation. And while we often would like them to come and testify at our meetings, and they often, very often do, and members of the HPC are here this evening...
Well, actually, that's my question, John. In this, point number three of this memo, the commission is requesting that, so what's going on with that?
If we can hold off on that...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
If we can hold off on that until the end of the meeting, and we'll deal with that then. I know we're not going to, as I said at the top of the meeting, I don't believe we're going to get beyond any of the applicant's witnesses this evening, so that's not an issue that we're going to be dealing with this evening.
If it's anticipated that we will have their consultant come before the Board?
And...
It's just another, you know, person to be heard, I guess.
Right. That's exactly right.
Yeah.
It's just a question of the order.
Yeah. Okay.
And the order does not impact the weight of what we're hearing.
Just to close this out, so, I mean, in fair notice to them and others, do you anticipate hearing from the HPC at the next meeting?
I don't know.
Okay.
As I said, I would be guessing.
Okay.
We have to see how far we get in this meeting. If we get through one witness, then no. If we get through four witnesses this evening...
Yeah.
How many witnesses do you intend to present, Counselor?
Five.
So if we get through five witnesses this evening, then maybe at the next meeting.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to echo what I just said in terms of, we have five witnesses, actually, six, actually, like, to clarify, five and a half. The, this evening, we're, from the technical testimony standpoint, we have Kevin Webb returning from Langen Engineering to respond to some changes that were addressed in the packet submitted to the Board with respect to the site engineering and project engineering elements. We also have Mr. Bruce Stevie from Marchetto Higgins &amp; Stevie to address some changes and amendments also submitted in the packet with respect to the architectural components of the project. We have with us tonight Carl Pankey from Langen Engineering, as well as Mr. Kristin Sokic from Pro Park America. They've both submitted updated parking management and parking plans as part of the packet. And just to lay the, or set the table, Mr. Pankey will do the primary direct introduction and we'll have Mr. Sokic available to answer questions to the extent that they arise. Finally, we have Sean Moransky from Langen Engineering, our professional planner, to hopefully close out our direct case with respect to the planning testimony in support of the variance requested, as well as a number of other issues which have been raised during the course of these meetings. Before they get started, we have Brian Stolar on behalf of the applicant to just testify briefly and make a statement in conjunction of sort of where we are to sort of set the table again, not to overuse that expression. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd have Mr. Stolar testify. I believe Mr. Stolar's previously been sworn in, but...
Mr. Stolar, you're still under oath. Yes, thank you. Thank you, very short. Could you bring my iPad? I only have a phone. Just as a quick update on our end, obviously, you all know it's now been 10 months of the Planning Board, and we do hope we're coming to a conclusion over the next meeting or two. For that, we obviously had our three years working on the AMP. Bankruptcy certainly didn't help, a bunch of other things. We also worked on it for about a year and a half before, as some folks know or don't know, to get control of this after the initial last AMP bankruptcy. Anyway, last, I think, September, about that time, Rob Schmidt, Principal at Hampshire, our partner, had talked about a potential supermarket and that we had 15 initially and that most had gone their way, their own separate way. And so I just wanted to report back a little bit, and obviously Hampshire's our partner here, some other projects. We respect them tremendously as a very valuable partner, but for this particular project, they are special, and I just wanted to note it again for the members of the Board, because they have been dealing with supermarkets for over 50 years, actually about 60. And the good news is, we're still talking to that same group and that we have one other. So we're very, very pleased about that, and we're confident that we'll be able to come to a conclusion. They're not exactly the same size. One is the 40-some-odd thousand, one is 30-some-odd thousand, but they're both large, full-service supermarkets. And the issue only is, the reason we're not saying it, any name or can't conclude, is that none of them really want to be involved and have their name attached to something unless they know what it is when it's finally done. So this is very hard for everybody. We appreciate the time and just wanted to look forward to moving it on and give you that short update. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with your permission, we'll ask Mr. Webb to come back up. Mr. Webb also previously sworn under oath.
Welcome back, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Should we mark, are you going to testify about the new civil plan?
Yeah. So what's on the screen is actually the new civil spread. This one's not, sometimes they're colorized or they're slightly different. This one's the same, but we can mark this.
We didn't mark the revised plans that were submitted. So perhaps I'm going to mark those as A42? And then if there's anything different in this PowerPoint, that could be A43. Is there anything different?
There is not. None of what I intend to show is anything different than what's already been submitted in that same pack.
So these will be the civil plan set prepared by Langen revised through 11/15?
Correct.
2018.
So, Mr. Webb, I guess, oh, so this is A42. So, Mr. Webb, referring to A42, could you give the, which is on the PowerPoint, if you could give the Board the benefit of, I guess, a little overview of what's evolved?
Certainly. So what we're looking at on the screen is the site plan, drawing CS 101 from exhibit A42. I want to focus on a couple of specific things, modifications to the program that are important, not only in their own right, but specifically because they affect the overall parking demand totals and therefore the variance that we are seeing.
Excuse me for one second. What exhibit is that? I can't see that. It's...
This is the site plan, CS 101.
What's it, CS?
CS 101.
Okay.
So the first change is a slight modification to the footprint of the grocery/retail, essentially the big building, if you will. We shaved off 25 feet of the loading dock area here, whereas before, we had a distance from this proposed face of the loading dock to our property line of 135 feet. It's now 160 feet. So there was essentially a rectangle here that we've shaved off. The square footage associated with that rectangle is 1,841 square feet. That brings the total footprint of that grocery/retail store to 45,945 square feet. We made this change for a couple of reasons. One is, there had been some questions and some concerns lingered, both from the Board, the Board professionals, and even our, the adjacent property owner, about the efficiency of the truck turning movements within this, what I'll call a truck court area, this loading dock area. By taking that reduction of the 25 feet, we've really cleaned all that up. We now have more than enough space. I think we had adequate space before, but we have a comfortable amount of space now to accommodate all the truck turning movements. That's represented actually within the Plan 17 and 18 of that same set, to where we demonstrate that all the truck turning movements can be made into each one of the four loading positions, assuming that the other three loading positions are fully occupied and there's no encroachments on any of the adjacent spaces to get in or out of any of those loading dock spaces. So that's all part of the record of what was submitted. The driveway itself is not changed, so the other fringe benefit of moving the building back is that the tractor trailers are also moved farther back. So this island, which remained the same, really screens the entirety, not just of the trailer, but of the cab as well. So we essentially created more space and have effectively lengthened our visual screen at the loading dock area, excuse me. The second change is more subtle, maybe requires a little more explanation. In the footprint of the restaurant space, the footprint itself has not changed whatsoever. So it's the same 7,667 square feet. In trying to clarify and do some of our homework on making sure that we had consistency amongst all the numbers, both in the parking reports and in our site plans, what we found was that that space, where what we now think of as the Pig and Prince, is actually only a portion of that footprint. So there's a demising wall, whereas this large footprint of approximately 7,600 square feet, the Pig and Prince comprises approximately 5,000 square feet of that. So there's an additional portion which has to be, which will be occupied, which has to be accommodated in the parking demand calculations. What we've done is identified an 1,800-square-foot portion of that footprint to be dedicated to what we're calling a fast food restaurant. It's meant to be a quick service restaurant. Fast food is a definition that your ordinance has for the purposes of the parking compliance. It doesn't mean it has to be fast food. It's just the difference between essentially quick service versus full table service, which obviously the Pig and Prince is, and that's the things we've made there. They have separate parking demand requirements. In the case of this, for, if you will call it, found 1,800 square feet, we've identified 72 seats within that restaurant. For a so-called fast food or quick service restaurant, the parking demand is one space for two seats, so we identified a 36-space parking obligation for that space. So that reduction of the 1,800 square feet comes out of the remainder of what we'll call, if you will, the Pig and Prince space. We have not reduced the seat count or the lounge bar seat count for the Pig and Prince. We had gotten that from our research of what the Pig and Prince actually is, so our assumptions carry that forward. The net result of all that, the slight reduction in the grocery retail footprint in this addition of the so-called fast food restaurant, actually increases the parking demand numbers. 859 spaces are required. That's 844 if we were to exclude the demand associated with the TD Bank property. As we know, it's sort of an ancillary part of this application because we're making some driveway modifications. It's 859 required, 844 if you were to exclude the TD Bank parking spaces. We are providing 476 or 459 if you exclude those spaces accommodating TD Bank. So the distribution and the number of parking spaces that are in this plan are the same as in the prior set. We have made some slight modifications in what we'll call the West Lot, the main parking lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Webb. Can you please just say that again? So excluding TD Bank, the required number of parking spaces is 844?
844.
And what you have is?
459.
459. Thank you.
So also, can you just clarify from a, because this is a roving target here, is, does this new modification, is that reflected in this?
It is, yes.
Okay. Are there visuals, does it reflect in this, the new space?
Yes.
Okay. What is in this space right now?
It's really space that is utilized essentially as extra space, non-lease space, some overflow space, if you will, by the Pig and Prince operator. It's not separately leased. They're not paying for that space. Their lease is for the lesser demise space, like I said, approximately 5,000 square feet.
Did you just discover this space, or?
Well, it's not discovered space, but we, in cleaning the numbers up, we realized that what we thought they had a full lease of the entire footprint of the building turned out to be only a portion of that, and we realized that there's a demising wall within that space that we had not accurately depicted previously.
So their back wall, where there are tables right now, you're saying there's a space behind there, and they're currently using that as storage? Is that...
Well, I think they use it informally. I mean, storage, I'm not sure exactly what's in that.
And is there window access there right now? Is it seen from the street?
It can be accessed. There is a door, I would say, on sort of the western corner of that existing building here, right off of the walkway to Lackawanna Plaza.
Uh-huh. And there, but there's no access to that space with, within either the Pig and Prince or from the current existing hallway? Is that correct? So that entire, what you're calling fast food restaurant, is a proposed new use in a space that has been dormant?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about that? So in that new fast food space, the main entrance door will be on the Lackawanna parking lot, where it's proposed that we're going to have 50 cars potentially parked there, and now you're having a drive-up fast food place that you anticipate a quick in and out? Is that...
Well, I don't know. It's certainly, when you say "drive up," I mean, the doorway is, to answer your question, the doorway is not changing. It will be oriented towards Lackawanna Plaza.
Okay. And that's the only doorway? It's just towards that Lackawanna Plaza?
It's not a drive-up, drive-in, drive-through.
No, it's a park and go grab your food and then come out. That's what I was anticipating.
It, we don't, we don't have a tenant for that space, so it could be, we have accommodated seats inside. It's not obligatory to take it out, but...
No, you described it as a, I don't know, fast...
Your ordinance gives us two choices.
Oh, okay.
It's fast food, which is defined as, in fact, I could actually read it, where it's ready to consume for consumption either within a building or off the premises. So it gives you the option. You're either eating it inside or you can take it out. Whereas a quote-unquote "restaurant," food is to be served, quote-unquote, "only to be consumed by customers seated at tables on the premises."
And you said, was there 72 seats that you said? And that's 72 seats?
We're assuming 72 seats for that space, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, we haven't changed, as part of this plan modification, we haven't changed the number of parking spaces in any of the lots. There's still 199 spaces in what we call the West Lot, the main lot. Some of the modifications we have made is, previously, we had seven handicap spaces, which was actually one in excess of what's required according to the barrier for subcode. We have, and there were three handicap spaces in this northwestern corner of the lot. The fact that there were seven really rendered from when this lot was in an earlier iteration of the plan, actually, over 200 parking spaces. Once you exceed 200 parking spaces, you would need a seventh. We're right below that. We have six. And we have shifted two handicap spaces to be oriented directly adjacent to the restaurant. So that lines up with the existing handicap ramp that serves the restaurant today. Some of the other modifications we've made include, we have eliminated, and this is to address one of Mr. Geos's comments, he had expressed concern about, we had a 60-foot area defined along the storefront here as a taxi ride-share area. At his request, we have relocated that to be out of this drive-by in front of the store and have now three dedicated parking spaces at the northeastern portion of the lot to be signed as taxi-ride-share spaces. Directly adjacent to those spaces, to answer a question that's come up from the Board members of, essentially, what happens if this... members of essentially what happens if this, this tenant provides some sort of store pickup, some customer pickup? So we've identified two other spaces here to be dedicated to essentially customer pickup from the store. And there was discussion in the last meeting about if the tenant provides some sort of delivery service, where would that vehicle go? We've identified one space here to be dedicated for that tenant's delivery service if, in fact, they do provide it. I know there was concerns, and we've added notes to the plans to ensure that those delivery vans are not parked on Bloomfield Avenue parking spaces. That's shown on, actually, the next sheet. It's the signs and striping plan. We have also added five car corrals into the parking, the main parking area. We've added two. We had some excess space, which we thought was best utilized by adding car corrals here and here. We've added three more in this location, sort of in the middle of the west, one closer to the bus stop, and then one in this area essentially located. So we have a grand total of eight car corrals, whereas before we had five. We made some other relatively modest changes to landscaping and lighting.
I'm sorry, just before you, can you just recap again? So you said you have three ride-share spaces dedicated?
Right, three taxi-ride-share spaces.
Right.
Two customer pickup.
Two customer pickup and one?
One delivery van.
So that's six spaces that are not to be used by the general public?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, Mr. Penkey can address that in his testimony, but I think it's consistent with our discussions with Mr. Giosa that those spaces represent the man that would otherwise, they essentially offset trips that would be made by others, or they have a higher turnover rather than regular user.
And then you have six handicap spaces.
Correct.
So there's twelve spaces altogether that are dedicated for a certain purpose. So how many spaces then are open to the general public?
Well, there's a hundred and ninety-nine total.
Minus twelve, so one seventy-eight. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. It was one ninety-nine minus the twelve.
Oh, okay.
So the, if my memory is correct, it's been a while, the ShopRite in Bloomfield has a dedicated area where cars are supposed to pull in and pick up their pre-ordered food in boxes. Get in there, get the boxes, and get out of there. Are you, other than the three or two you've mentioned with the delivery, or do you have an area for that, which seems to be the wave of the future?
Well, we have those two identified for that purpose now. If the tenant had a more robust operation, there could be additional space dedicated for that use, but as a baseline, we're providing two right now, again, without knowledge of what the tenant's program's going to be.
So shouldn't you define what the tenant's programs, program is going to be before coming to say you have only two spots if they have a more robust program?
Well, there are two spaces if they're required by the tenant at all. We don't know that the tenant will have that service whatsoever. It was really from, we thought, an affirmative answer to the board's questions of what if you need to do those, where are those going to be? So again, as a baseline, we provided two in a dedicated area.
Okay, for now.
As I started to discuss, we had some, some relatively modest changes to the landscaping and lighting. Mr. Brodak specifically had reminded us that we had previously committed to substituting the three pinots that were proposed along Bloomfield Avenue. We have done so now with American Elms that were, it's the same cultivar and species that was proposed elsewhere along that Bloomfield Avenue front. So we have also reevaluated the lighting specifically at the plaza area at the corner of Lackawanna and Bloomfield. We have actually added one light. You can see it here, it's sort of in front of the Pig and Prints. What we also realized was our model had did not take into account there are some existing spotlights that shine down in that plaza area from existing light poles that are initially designed for Bloomfield Avenue and Lackawanna Plaza lighting. They do have some spotlights that shine down on that. We have done our best to estimate that, so the plans now reflect the cumulative total of all those lights, the one that we've added, and then the four spotlights that are there We also have shown, for the purposes of plan consistency, within this walkway, that's the connection between Lackawanna Plaza and this western lot, the five overhead lights, they mimic those that are proposed for the stanchions. Those are now part of the model as well. And we also, after some discussion with Mr. Heller, we've modified the lighting in the loading dock as a whole. We've added one light pole that's just on the corner of his property at his request that's direct on the west side of the entrance there. We also have added one additional because of the lengthening of essentially this face, this southern elevation of that rear of the building is longer now. We've added an additional wall pack there. There's two where there was one before. And we've, just to be clear, we've also added a wall pack in this area to further add light into the area that would light the, the other service area of the retail spaces. We have added, again, as was requested by Mr. Brodak, added a water service to the horse trough as well. So that's the summation of the, the planned changes.
Other questions from the board, since we've already started?
I have one question. Is, so in the loading dock area, there's one light?
No, there's actually, there's, there's two pole-mounted lights, one on either side of the driveway, and then there's.
Those circles?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Here and here.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have a total of three wall-mounted lights, one on this western elevation, then two on this, I guess it's the northern side of the building.
And will they stay on at night, those lights? Are they motion sensors at all for evening? Because it's pretty isolated and dark back there at night. Would there possibly be motion lights?
Well, certainly this, you know, these, the lights near the entrance are, will be function, I think, just like they do streetlights, you know, throughout the town. So I'm not sure exactly what the program, my, my estimate is they'd be on more than not, some, you know, dusted-on lighting there. In terms of the lighting, I think there might be a reduction of perhaps one of those over time. I think there will be some light on those. Again, that, that's something that we consider the board's opinion, if you wanted more light or less light, how you wanted us to manage that, because that's just a matter of putting on timers and managing that from the store's perspective.
So I have a question once again about the new fast food space. How is trash removed? Does that have access to the back delivery area?
It will, yes.
Yeah.
And what there is, there's sort of, what's shown in the footprint of what's called the Pig and Prints now, there's sort of a shared service area here that would allow that access and ultimately serve both, I believe.
Okay, so, and deliveries would be made in the back loading dock area, not in the front?
It's, it's possible, depending on, I mean, for, for larger deliveries would be in the back. I mean, there, it's possible that some small items could be delivered in the front, but I think primarily they would be managed through the back.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any questions from the public concerning the testimony this evening from this witness? All right, Counselor?
Well, I had a question actually for Mr. Stoller. If I may, I'm sorry, I thought it might be discussed by Mr. Webb.
Well, Mrs. Stoller?
Yeah, I had a question for you. You had talked about your potential tenants, right? And you had mentioned that there's two potential tenants with different size supermarket requirements. You had mentioned two figures, I think.
Yes.
And they were? Can you say that again?
One is over forty thousand and one is over thirty thousand.
Okay. I mean, I think just, it might be helpful, I mean, it was helpful for me to have an idea of what the square footage of other local supermarkets are. For example, the Whole Foods Market in Montclair is eighteen thousand square feet, relatively small. The King's Supermarket is about nineteen. The Whole Foods Market in West Orange is about thirty-eight. So you're looking at something potentially near thirty-eight, the size of the Whole Foods Market in West Orange? And for example?
The food town in Bloomfield is twenty, and so forth.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, it gives people a better idea visually of how big this is.
These are both much larger than those on average.
They're both much larger? You said?
Other than the Whole Foods.
Yeah, so you're looking at something that's similar to the Whole Foods, perhaps?
Yes.
Thirty-eight thousand square feet or so. And so what are you looking at for the other balance of the space?
Just be complimentary retail that would go well with the, with the food store.
Such as?
We have no idea.
You have no idea yet?
Depends. If we go with one of the food stores, there may not be any at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And by the way, just a quick comment on concern Martin you raised on the pickup, just as a point, where everything is going is away from pickup to delivery, is where the industries go, just as a comment.
Good evening, David Greenbaum, Ninety-One Lloyd Road, Montclair. I have two questions to ask of the applicant. The first is if, I wasn't quite clear if the parking space requirements, what was the difference between the eight fifty-nine and the eight forty-four? That wasn't clear to me.
So the, there is, the TD Bank lot is technically part of this application because we were making modifications to a portion of their property. Their site access is actually starts on our property and connects into theirs where the existing, existing driveway off of Bloomfield Avenue comes in and sort of almost like a slip ramp and then enters into their parking lot. We're making modifications there, and those modifications encroach onto their property. So technically, they are subject property and they have consensus to this application. So for the purposes of sort of the overall numbers, we've included the TD requirements, both for requirement, parking required and parking supplied. So that's why we have two sets of numbers. It either includes the TD Bank. We are not utilizing any spaces on TD Bank's lot for our property, and TD is not using any spaces on, shall we call, our property for, for their use. So like I said, it's a technical distinction only for the purposes of the variance calculation. We're not relying on them and they're not relying on us.
Okay. Let me just make sure I have this correct. So I'm, again, maybe I missed it. So somewhere around three hundred and eighty-five parking spaces, there's a gap between what is technically by ordinance required for parking based on the tenancy and the square footage as proposed. If I did this correctly, somewhere about three hundred and eighty-five plus parking spaces are missing in the current plan. Is that correct? To be compliant with the township ordinance?
Correct.
Three hundred and eighty-five out of a total of between eight forty-four and eight fifty-nine, to give you the benefit of the doubt.
Well, it's eight forty-four for the purpose that support our, our program, yes.
So what I don't understand is how for, there's, there's two parties that are going to be experiencing hardship. Presumably, if I understand correctly, you're going to be looking for a variance of a prop, of approximately three hundred and eighty-five parking spaces. Two particular parties are going to experience hardship based on that shortfall. One is, of course, the tenants who will have difficulty bringing their clientele into the space comfortably to be able to shop. But more critically, and that's an issue for you as a, as somebody looking to lease the space, and also for the tenant, but there's another party who is going to be grossly affected, and that would be the residents of the township of Montclair, who presently experienced a tremendous degree of hardship due to lack of parking in the community. So am I to understand that for, that eight, three hundred and eighty-five parking space deficit, there's going to be spillover onto street parking, meter parking, et cetera, which is going to crowd out what is already a tremendous shortfall in the parking in our community, mostly due to grandfathering, et cetera? How do you propose to reconcile that?
So, Mr. Grimo, I think this question might actually be better suited to our, our parking expert, but there's, there's been expansive testimony, and there'll be some more testimony regarding the application of a shared parking approach to the project whereby we're not literally suggesting that there's a three hundred and eighty-five parking space shortfall at any given time with the shared parking approach. And I don't want to speak for our expert. It, it, it limits that to the idea that there's never really a shortfall.
Okay. With it, with respect to your updated plan, and we all agree that there is essentially a modified application at this time, is that correct? There's variances between the previous applications, plans that have been presented. So is it safe to say that, we agree that this is a modified application?
It's not a modified application. The application has continued with revisions to address comments brought from the board and the board professionals.
Okay.
What's your question, Mr.?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that. So I want to, I want to recall, I know there's been some discussion about pedestrian access, and I know that's been a theme from members of the township and members of the planning board. Can you show us examples of how you've addressed that in your current plan? Thank you.
It's, nothing changed from the prior submission, so it's, it's not, nothing been changed since we've testified previously. But there are, there have been additions to, what the project does is enhances, maintains all the existing pedestrian movements and enhances those from Grove Street, from Grove Street by the reactivation of the historic staircase and the, in this area adjacent to the proposed driveway, we're proposing a new pedestrian ramp walkway.
Show me the new pedestrian, just to make it clear.
Here.
That's in addition to what had previously been presented?
Well, that was already presented before.
So what you're saying is, since the last plan that was presented, there has been no modifications to reflect a need, a request for consideration of pedestrian access for residents of Montclair?
So I'm going to object to the question only because it presupposes that there was a request by this board to address a shortfall in pedestrian. I, I'm aware of no such request by this board.
I differ. I believe there were substantial requests by members of the board and members of the community.
Request is not the correct word. There were questions about it, and I believe some of the supermarket, the supermarket consultant also had, they may have made a suggestion for it, and members of the public had questioned about it. So if we want to avoid the word "request," we can say "question."
In any case, this, what was presented this evening doesn't make any change to what has been previously testified to by the applicant.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions from the public?
Hello, Priscilla Eshelman, Fifty Label Street, Montclair. Can you please explain on the schematic exactly where the fast food restaurant is compared in relation to the courtyard next to the restaurant and the garden there?
Sure. So this is, this approximate rectangle is the footprint of the restaurant's face today. It's the southern, maybe three-quarters of that is what we've now discovered is what we think of as the Pig and Prints internally. It's the Pig and Prints that fronts onto the plaza area here. It's this little sliver, again, eighteen hundred square feet, which has its access here near the Lackawanna Plaza parking lot and entrance. But that's the space.
So it's not towards Bloomfield, it's away from it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Mr. Stoller, please. I'm curious with the forty, if you build the larger building and then the tenant only wants thirty thousand square feet, and you might have ten thousand square feet for other businesses, you said, what if you don't find a supermarket tenant at all? Are you then allowed to fill it with any tenants that you care to?
I can't predict the future, but it's our goal, and we are in active conversations with two supermarkets right now. That's our goal, to bring one of them to the table. We can't be guarantors, but if we knew already that there wasn't any real opportunity or anybody had real interest, we wouldn't be sitting here saying that there is. So we certainly hope that that's the case.
And in answer to your question more specifically, I think, any space that the developer can develop as permitted under the local ordinances, and this is in the C1, this is is in the C one, this is the uses, uh, for this redevelopment area mirror the C one uses, correct?
Actually, there's no redevelopment, this is-
This is, this is still zoning, okay. So I, I get confused myself going back and forth between this. But yeah, so we're dealing with the commercial, uh, normal commercial tenants, so any tenant that would fit within that permitted use, uh, that the developer could accommodate either without any variance at all, or coming back to the board and seeking an additional variance to, to, uh, to accommodate that tenant, uh, could be a potential for any, um, overflow kind of tenant, uh, in the space that's currently mapped out for a supermarket.
I see. And also, um, you mentioned that you haven't gotten into, or, I'm sorry, the other witness, that you hadn't spoken about, um, delivery truck needs or pickup needs. It makes me curious how deep into conversations you are, when this would unfold, before the vote, after the vote?
I think we've discussed, we've discussed those topics at prior meetings. So there has been discussion about delivery and pickup and where it will be staged and, and such.
Right, but I'm saying because the two tenants that are under consideration now are considering this space, you haven't spoken to them about it, it makes me curious how far into the conversations you are.
I want to go on the record for saying that when we say something, we mean it, and we believe it, and we don't ever say anything otherwise, and I mean that respectfully.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, what you're talking about is really not, sorry, is it so?
Is it later on?
What you're talking about is really not the issue for us or for the town. We're talking about going forward into the future. So today, pickup at supermarkets is growing tremendously. Ten, fifteen years ago, it was barely existing at all.
Right.
Five and ten years from now, the plan of most of the folks in the industry, and I know this more from speaking with the folks in Hampshire and anybody else we've talked to, that I've been part of the conversations, even though they handle most of those discussions, is the future is going to be more about delivery. So what we're trying to do, and I think we've heard a lot of the questions and comments from the planning board and the public, uh, as well, is to provide for some pickup drop off, provide for a very substantial amount of parking, and I obviously take objection to the comments by Mr. Greenbaum that were not. Shared parking is an accepted principle for this, which our experts will testify to. But then for the future, there's very likely to be a lot of delivery. We are talking about, to make it really clear to you, um, trying to be as, as direct as I can, we're talking about pickup with these two folks, we're talking about delivery, and we're talking about parking. So we really are deep into those conversations.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Webb, uh, one question on SS one oh one, the striping plan?
Yes.
Uh, so, I see striping in some areas, just to confirm, on the north, on Glen Ridge Avenue, there would be striping there, is that correct, where the loading dock is?
In the loading dock here?
Yes, uh, not in the loading dock, but on connecting the sidewalk there. I just can't tell if that's striping.
This area.
It looks a little, it appears different than the other.
It is, it is not striped, it is a concrete apron and sidewalk.
Right, okay.
So it'll be demarcated differently than the rest of the driveway.
Right, and that's what we had discussed. And then on the entrance to Watchong, or sorry, yeah, Lakewanna Plaza, the two entrances to the plaza there, to the lower left by the Pig and Prince, would there be striping across those curb cuts?
The two existing curb cuts, we're not proposing any changes to those.
Got it. And then the last one is on the southeast corner of the East Parcel Building, the entrance to the parking there. It's a little bit odd because you're going from, I think, grass to grass, so maybe striping would be inappropriate there, but could you just comment on whether striping would add any additional safety for pedestrians crossing there?
I'm sorry, which driveway?
Sorry, on the south, so it's the far, if you look at the midline of the slide, the far right side.
Okay.
By the TD Bank, but even just north of the TD Bank, a little bit to the right-
Here?
Yes, right there.
Right.
Would, would striping be appropriate there, or perhaps not?
I think not, because it's not a pedestrian area, we're not encouraging pedestrian traffic essentially on that side of the driveway.
Yeah, I was just thinking of how much pedestrian traffic there will be transversing that whole lot. Um, but okay, I just wanted to ask, so, thank you.
I, I do have another question, uh, once again for Mr. Stoller. Since you opened the issue of what you're discussing with potential tenants, I'm wondering, are you discussing at all activating Glen Ridge Avenue?
Well, all of our discussions about Glen Ridge Avenue, going back to when we had the sixty-five thousand foot food store before that, that plan was derailed, have always been about what can we actually accommodate practically speaking? And as you see and as we've discussed, the loading is what it is, takes a large part of the area. Activating space right next to the loading has never been a, a really good workable idea. We've tried, I know you've had some interest in, in looking at that. The building, all the way to the corner, is designed as best as we can. We just can't put cafe or retail next to where there's a loading dock.
I mean, I'm not even talking about the loading dock, I'm talking about the corner of Grove Street and Glen Ridge Avenue.
Well, the corner-
Of Grove, Grove Street and Glen Ridge Avenue, that corner, if there's any discussion with your new potential tenant about making there, uh, an entrance to the supermarket there.
Yes, we've had that conversation, I don't mean to-
Over and over again.
Keep going over and over, but we've had this conversation, you and I, and publicly here, and we've talked to many of the supermarket tenants, Mr. Schmidt could certainly tell you that, nobody is really up for a secondary entrance in this day and age. There are supermarkets like that here and there, mostly smaller, mostly older, um, but nobody's really up for that. I do want to also point out that on both sides of the main parking lot, and this is something I know my position in New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition, working with Montclair Bike Walk, um, there are sidewalks all the way to Bloomfield Avenue on both sides. I challenge you to go to any other supermarket in this area and find that. The Whole Foods you mentioned, which I just was at, there's not a sidewalk on either side. You have to cross that drive aisle, two-way drive aisle with bad lighting to get to the supermarket. So here, on the western side, along where Pig and Prince is, you can walk all the way from Bloomfield. And on the eastern side, you do have to cross where our entrance is, which is one driveway. But I just wanted to point that out as well, because I know you've asked about that.
Yeah, not to belabor it, but you mentioned Whole Foods. You can access Whole Foods from Bloomfield Avenue and also from Bell Street, so there's pedestrians from any angle can get in there, but-
Respectfully, it's not the same, because if you're in Whole Foods parking lot-
Yep.
-you must cross through the parking lot in order to get to, to, other than if you're from the one side. Here, anybody walking along Bloomfield Avenue never has to walk in the parking lot. They can go down a sidewalk only, all the way to the front door. It's just a point I want to say.
Uh, one, hopefully, final question here on the parking, on this particular diagram that you have on your parking plan, exhibit, Mr. Webb?
We're actually going to be speaking, putting further testimony on about that.
All right, well, maybe you can just clarify it now, since, since I'm here. Uh, this is, you're showing this as valet parking. Uh, how do, how is that going to work with your newly created, uh, eighteen hundred square foot fast food space?
Yeah.
Normally, you'd expect people going to that, let's call it the fast food place to go in there, get in and out, but it seems that this is, you've allocated this for valet parking. Where are the newly created, uh, parkers going for that new space? Where do you anticipate them parking? Because it would be unlikely they would want to park around the corner into the main lot to then walk, that would sort of defeat the purpose of fast food. And, and when you say fast food, do you mean pizza, Popeye's Chicken, that sort of thing too, or are you talking about a res, more of a restaurant?
Two things. One, we are going to put specific testimony on about the operation of that lot and how it will be managed condition. Secondly, as I mentioned, there is no tenant identified for that space, so there's a wide range of possibilities that it could be.
Okay. So we'll wait till further testimony, fine, thank you.
Um, Mr. Webb, the added pavement or enlarged loading area is about how many square feet in addition to the prior set of drawings?
Eighteen hundred and forty-one. What was under roof is now in the loading area.
Um, again, back to the same question about snow. It's, it's nice to have a larger loading area, but now we also have more snow. Uh, we also have less area to put snow now that we're curbing and landscaping the area along Grove Street. We had a snowstorm last week. I was there. Where are we going to put snow?
As I had stated in prior testimony, the applicant has committed to remove snow from the site.
The snow can be removed from site in twenty-four hours, but where during a snowstorm is snow going to be put? There's no common area. You have trailer trucks, there's no area for all the other smaller trucks that are not demarcated on the plan. The snow, and my issue is less with your plan and more with, uh, the planning board, if I may, while we have a greater landscaped area, and there is a question here, I still believe now that the loading area is even larger, we need a place to put snow. Is there a possibility on site of putting the snow?
Again, we have committed to remove snow from the site. We have no dedicated areas for snow storage prior to its removal.
I will be back to comment on that to the very, very end. Been here for fifteen years.
Wait, so, so you're saying a dump truck is going to come and pick up the snow and carry it to another location?
It, it's all part of the site management and the maintenance of the site. Correct.
Not on the day that it snows. Snow used to go in the river. That stopped. They did remove the snow from site last week, a day later. Um, getting back to, if I may, the asphalt and the concrete, is the loading area going to be treated differently in terms of the rebar, the PSI in the concrete, the, the asphalt? Is there any treatment? I think you testified at the last meeting that you were expecting the asphalt to be the same in all parking areas?
Uh, correct. Well, there's two answers to that. We have reinforced concrete driveway aprons and loading dock apron. That's, that included as part of the plan, um, six-inch reinforced concrete, similar to what would be done in any distribution warehouse. Um, in terms of the asphalt, we've made no changes to the asphalt design. It's heavy-duty pavement both in the loading area and yes, in the other, um, common parking areas.
In the compactor area, and it is a compactor, not just a dumpster?
Uh, again, we're guessing about how their management, my expectation is that a grocery store or a retail user of this size would, would want a compactor.
Would there typically be underneath a compactor some sort of drain or oil separator or, or catchment area for liquids that would come out of that compactor?
I have seen designs like that. Um, I don't know that it's required or typical necessarily, but I have seen that in, in, in other projects.
Is that something that, if necessary, would be contemplated or if imposed by the planning board?
If it were required, we would consider it, yes.
Which brings me to the, the next question. You have, could you show the drainage drawing? There's one catch basin for this entire, I believe it's over a half acre of pavement. Could you point out to us where the-
Actually, that's incorrect. There, there's, there's trench drains proposed-
What is a trench drain?
Trench drain proposed along the loading dock front edge, which will take approximately half of this air, this total loading area's drainage, and then the balance of that goes to, uh, catch basin here.
Can you show the drawing that has the, there is a drawing that has the-
There is a drawing, I don't have it as part of this set, but it is the grading and drainage plan.
So the parking lot or the loading area will be elevated, the topo will be a high point in essence in the middle of the lot, so water will drain back to the building-
Correct.
And water will drain over toward the easement-
Correct.
And be caught by a single catch basin there, or will there be a trench drain in that area?
No, there's a single catch basin there, but the grading has been redone such that there's, uh, it won't be directed towards that drain.
Okay. And the loading area where the trucks are parking, is that concrete or is that asphalt?
Reinforced concrete. All of these dark gray areas you see here, so this entire loading apron, sixty feet, is reinforced concrete, as is the reinforced concrete apron and sidewalk that's across the driveway entrance.
Um, the TM one and the TM two drawings, which are the drawings that show the truck articulation and loading, I looked at the revised drawings. I don't see, even though you have added, I think, twenty-five feet of depth through the loading area, the truck articulation seems to be exactly the same. The trucks still seem to be coming to the same point toward my property, even though you have an additional twenty-five feet.
As I've stated before, we're very conservative movements. Uh, the purpose of those revised, uh, plans was to demonstrate that there'd be no conflicts between other tractor trailers parked at adjacent spaces. It's not the only route that those trucks can take to maneuver in that space. It's, it's basically the cleanest, most conservative way that we can present it on a plan.
But the new plan is showing it, the trucks going to the same point to my ramp or to the area underneath, which I'll thank you in a moment for the, the bars, but it's seeming like it's being made to fit rather than made to work.
Quite the opposite. Um, we have the extra, the space, we did not work to try to, you know, minimize that distance between where the easement is and the ends of those truck movements, again, which are schematic in, in depiction.
Okay. Um, just to put on the record, I did see on the drawings, it's been represented here at the meetings, I think you did provide for the clearance bars. Could you just explain that for us?
Correct. So we have shown in two locations, as was previously testified to, um, it's a little hard to, to see here, that the entrance to the above, uh, the structured parking on the adjacent property has a ramp. We're showing clearance bar at the head of that ramp, and also proposing clearance bars essentially at the entrance to the surface parking lot, um, in both cases to prevent, affirmatively prevent tractor trailers, um, above ten feet, uh, via, any vehicle above ten feet in height from, uh, encroaching into that area. I believe it was ten feet that we had put on there, if my memory serves.
Thank you. Um, you, one, one other, can you show to us and to the board the, there's a ramp or a set of stairs in the loading area from the loading dock to?
Here?
Yeah.
It's, it's a ramp.
Is that going to affect, in essence, when the trucks come in, they're now having to navigate another, if I can call it obstacle, let, let's assume for the moment there's a car, a truck, someone going to the post office somewhere in the middle of that parking lot, which I think we all know is going to be there, the truck will honk its horn, someone will get out and ask it to move, but nevertheless, the ramp doesn't move. Is there a reason that it's there from my perspective next door? It just seems to be another encumbrance to getting into the loading area. Can it be off to one side or the other? Why can't it be up against the building?
It was actually the preferred location for one of the particular tenants that's still under consideration to take this site. So we've maintained their preferred, uh, orientation of all the dock doors, the compactor and that, um, that ramp.
Taking their preference aside, from a site perspective, wouldn't it be easier for all truck movements to not have that ramp sort of in the middle of the parking lot, instead have it up against the building?
Uh, not necessarily. I, I think the trucks can maneuver equally to any of those spaces. Um, again, the operators are in the business of operating their stores efficiently. Um, I, I see no limitation on the ability to use or operate in that truckport by, with the configuration that's shown.
Is there a reason there's a ramp rather than just a set of stairs?
Well, it's a ramp so they can use hand trucks.
Well, trailer trucks aren't going to use hand trucks, you're talking about the smaller trucks.
Correct.
So there's going to be smaller trucks, if I may, with the, yeah, got it. All through in this area, again, the easement, shared easement is here, but all through in this area, there's going to be trucks, smaller trucks, vans, something of that sort to be able to utilize and get their hand trucks, dollies and the like up that ramp.
I don't think they will be throughout the area, it's going to be actively managed by hand users. Obviously, it's not in their interest to have trucks, uh, direct store delivery trucks or the box trucks that we described in prior testimony blocking maneuverability of, or usability of docks or the trucks that may be trying to enter or exit those as well.
I would just ask for consideration to contemplate putting that ramp up against the, the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of this witness from the public?
Adam Baker, 38 Christopher Street.
Your name again?
Adam. Last name Baker. This is getting back to something that was said earlier. Some, I think it was like an aesthetic consideration. I heard something about changing the siding of Pin Oak to American Elm. I wasn't paying attention as to where you said that was occurring. Could you point that out to me?
Yes, there are, were previously three Pin Oaks in this area between the proposed driveway and the corner of Lake Warner Plaza along Bloomfield Avenue. The request was to swap those out. We have chosen to do so with American Elms, which are also proposed currently and not representing a change along the rest of the frontage along Bloomfield and this suddenly part of Grove Street.
Thank you.
Just one other question echoing the concern of my neighbor about the snow removable. Let's say that it snows and then there's a plow that comes. Is there like permeable surface other than asphalt, like that abuts against Bloomfield Avenue for where it can be like placed before it can be, I'm assuming, trucked out of here?
There's a, there's a small area of landscape and landscape strip in this area, but it's not large between the parking lot and the sidewalk.
So if the, if the snow was going to be plowed, would it probably be plowed in the front?
Not necessarily. Again, that's going to be up to the management and their subconscious, like physically how they go about collecting and removing the snow.
Thank you.
Hi, Lori Testa of the Little Juke. I have a question about the parking spaces that have been eliminated on Glen Ridge Avenue. By my calculations, there are two missing, and I think they're important to both my business and the post office.
There are two that, there's a net loss of two spaces on Glen Ridge Avenue based on the reconfiguration of the driveway.
Is there any way to get those back in or at least one of them?
Well, we have. There's actually three eliminated and one added back in for the net loss of two.
How about getting another one back in?
There's really not enough room based off of our evaluations of the truck turning movements coming in and out, which, again, I know are conservative. The, the combination of the way the driveway is today is as small as it can be to accommodate the truck turning movements to get in and out of the loading dock. So I don't see an opportunity on our side of the street to get an additional parallel parking space.
Okay. Not too good, but thanks.
Other questions from the public of this witness?
Good evening. Melissa Bavacqua, Pine Street.
Can you, please, tell your last name?
Bavacqua, be like boy, be like Edward, be like Victor. A-C-Q-U-A.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention again about the lighting. Interestingly, motion, you had mentioned motion sensors for the lighting, especially at night. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that as there's more development happening down near Pine Street and in Glen Ridge and the Vestry that's going up, there's more people that are walking this corner late at night, especially heading up to the restaurants. So if there's something that we, you know, can keep in mind with the lighting late at night, that would be really important to me.
Other questions from the public? Counselor, I think we are ready for the next witness.
Thank you. So Mr. Stevie from Marchant Hill Higgins and Stevie. Mr. Stevie is also previously sworn in.
And Mr. Stevie, you're still under oath.
Yes.
And Mr. Stevie, are you going to be testifying about the revised plans submitted?
Yes, there were revised architectural plans and then revised perspective views.
Okay, so just to keep up with the exhibits, Mr. Trottnor, maybe we can say A-43 are the revised architectural drawings dated 11/15/18. And, let's see, here we go. A-44 would be eleven by, would you call it eleven by seventeen handout? What's that called, Mr. Stevie?
Yeah, we call those perspective views.
Perspective views, okay. Perspective views by Marchant Hill Higgins and Stevie dated November 15. And is the PowerPoint presentation the same reflect what was submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Without standing on ceremony, Mr. Stevie, with respect to what's now been marked as Exhibits A-43 and A-44, which are the architectural drawings and perspective views, could you give the board a overview of amendments and evolution of what we've been contemplating?
Yes. So we'll start with A-43. And these drawings were updated to be coordinated with the site civil set that was submitted by Langton Engineering. And so the parking configurations have been updated to reflect the parking configurations from the site civil drawings. The retail supermarket square footage has been updated to reflect the engineering drawings. And then the, the lighting has been updated to reflect the civil engineering drawings. And lastly, the restaurant space was adjusted again to reflect the changes that were made on the site civil drawings. So.
Mr. Stevie, just a question on the other exhibit. So are these drawn to scale so that that new space that's going to be a fast food restaurant? It looks like just a?
This is, this is actually an overall plan, a roof plan, so this doesn't accurately show that.
Oh, okay. So that little sliver is not the new?
No.
Okay.
So the only drawings that changed in this set were A-1. And again, that was because it's an overall site plan. The next drawing that changed was drawing A-9. Sorry, A-8 and A-9. So this drawing is a plan drawing that reflects the 1,800 square foot change to the restaurant. So this, on this plan, you can see that.
Please fill out what you have up when you pull something up so we can track.
Sure. This is drawing number A-8, and this is the floor plan of the west block, west parcel. So this, this reflects that change. It reflects the adjustment to the truck court on A-8.
A-8, correct?
That's correct.
So Mr. Stevie, can you remind me what, what's in the area that says no change and right above that? It just says no change in the left-hand corner by the Pig and Prince, existing restaurant? Yeah, that little bit there?
This existing restaurant?
That's all the Pig and Prince.
This is all the Pig and Prince, and then there's the sliver of this, of the restaurant area that has been designated for quick service.
Okay. And so where's the back door to the new fast food restaurant that has access to the?
This is that shared space.
That's enclosed?
That's enclosed, yes. So again, that, the other change was the light fixtures that were added to the pedestrian space, and I'll speak more about that on the next drawing that was changed. On sheet A-9, we have a specification for the light fixture that's being specified for that pedestrian space. Again, it's similar in character to the light fixtures that are being used in the parking field. It has a, an industrial or railroad aesthetic. The next thing that, the next drawing that changed in this set is A-10. A-10, I'm going to zoom in a little bit if that's okay. So the Glen Ridge Avenue elevation has been updated to reflect the changes in the loading dock area. I will note that the landscaping's not shown on this drawing. It's shown on the landscape drawings, so you don't see the landscape buffer, but it shows the architectural treatment of that facade. A-11 is the next drawing that changed. On A-11, there's a detail of the entrance canopy that will run along the face of the supermarket. That's in the upper-right corner. And basically what it shows is it shows that the canopy and stanchions of that last frontage will remain in place, and the new storefront will be inserted between the columns of that canopy. So the wall of the supermarket will be at the backside of the canopy. The entrance storefront will be at the column line of the canopy, and then the canopy will extend out over the sidewalk along the front of the supermarket.
And Mr. Stevie, that's no different than what's there now, right?
That's correct. It's very similar to what's there now. Right now, there's coiling grills that come down that closed off the path, that separated the path mark from the shopping mall. Those will become storefront.
The light fixture that you have hanging there, that's the same light fixture you showed on the previous?
That's correct.
Drawing, the black one?
It's a similar one to that, yes. It's a, appears on the engineering drawings.
Okay.
The next drawing that changed was A-17. And A-17 is a drawing, a compilation drawing of the changes that are proposed, the restoration and the detailing of the historic horse trough with the addition of the architectural historic plaques and the water feature. So this, there's a photograph in the lower-left corner of the existing conditions of the horse trough, and then there's a historical photo to the left of that that shows that a lot of the detailing has been lost on, on the horse trough, and we're proposing to bring that back. And then by introducing a series of bronze plaques that will be mounted to the horse trough in a sympathetic way, using the patterning of the horse trough to create their form, we will have a bronze plaque in the front that will have a waterspout that will splash water into the basin of the horse trough. And then on the back, there'll be historical plaques that will have historic information, dates, and photographs of the site. And then the next sheet that was added was sheet A-18, and this is a compilation sheet of the bus shelter. Again, one of the items that was discussed is how we were going to repurpose some of the columns that were being removed from the existing retail mall, and those columns would then be repurposed in different locations on the site. One of those locations would be the bus shelter. Four of those columns would be used to generate a shelter for patrons waiting for the bus. There would be glass or plexi panels inserted between the columns. There would be a new structure put on top, again, with a glass ceiling to provide shelter for people waiting for the bus from the elements. So those are, that's a general synopsis of the changes that were made to the architectural package. And now I will go to Exhibit A-44.
Just with respect to the bus shelter?
Yes.
How big is it?
It's approximate, well, there's three benches. It's, I would say it's about 18 feet long.
And are you providing benches?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stevie, could you call out again the next exhibit? You gave a number.
Yeah, the exhibit will be A-44, and those will be the perspective drawings that accompanied the package.
I don't think there are numbers on there.
There are no sheet numbers for each individual. It's those. It's the reduced copies of the renderings, and I'll just go through them in order that they appear in your handout. So the first image is an overhead view of the site. It shows both the east parcel and the west parcel. Again, this is generated to just be coordinated with the site civil drawings so that our packages match. It shows the adjusted truck court in the rear of the, of the property along Glen Ridge. It shows the plaza space in front of the Pig and Prince. It shows the canopies that extend across the entire length of the retail shopping and along the western edge of the retail that fronts on the parking lot. The next image is actually just a blow-up of the west parcel. Again, the plans have been coordinated to reflect the adjustments to the handicap parking, the adjustments to the cart corrals throughout the site. It includes the bramped pedestrian access along Grove as well as the stair access. It reflects the existing stanchions to remain in the parking field, and it shows the location of the horse trough in the plaza space. And again, these are model views that we presented in the past, but they have now been updated to reflect the current conditions. So this is a view of the project from the intersection of Bloomfield and Grove with the, with the decorative bollards and wall in the front. And you can see, again, in the back, the retail supermarket and entrance canopies. This is moving in towards the vehicular entrance off of Grove Street. This is looking north to the supermarket retail. You can see in the foreground the remaining stanchions in the parking field and then the new storefront utilizing the existing canopies and stanchions along the front of the supermarket. This is looking towards Grove Street, again, from the center of the parking field. You can see the, the columns will be reused with new light fixtures. They'll have a concrete base installed to give them protection from the vehicles. And then you can see the, the existing canopy and columns that will remain as an entry point and an entry feature into the supermarket. And this is looking from Grove Street down into the parking lot. Again, you can see the existing canopy. Again, you can see the existing canopy that will remain with the existing, I believe there's like fourteen existing columns that will be incorporated, remain in that location, and the new storefront that'll be installed in between, and I showed you that detail earlier in the architectural set. And this is looking towards the, the western face of the retail at the opposite end of the parking garage, I mean, the parking field, and you'll see, again, portions of the canopy and columns that will remain against that facade of the building. These are some new images that are looking through the pedestrian connection. This pedestrian connection goes from the parking field through the building under a covered walkway and come out into the Lackawanna Plaza at the opposite end. This shows how we're introducing the light fixtures, the industrial light fixtures that I showed you in the detail earlier in exhibit A43. It also shows that there's a retail, we talked about last time, there's a retail component that's, that enters off of that alley. So, there'll be a storefront with some blade signage mounted to the steel, and then, in the remaining spaces along that pedestrian walkway, there'll be additional historic plaques that will tell the story of the train station and the train station property.
Mr. Steves?
Mm-hmm.
Going down the alley there-
Yes.
What are those gray blocks? What material is that?
These, again, will be plaques.
Plaques, okay.
These will be placards, so they'll have, this is in a more protected area, so they may have something a little bit more lively, maybe there'll be some color photographs.
Okay.
But there'll be some, we talked about telling the story, there'll be some form of that, and that, those will be worked out with the proper-
With the HPC, perhaps?
The HPC, yeah, maybe the, maybe the Historical Society.
Okay, thank you.
But, but again, it'll be a series of those plaques and then a location for them.
I have a question about this, this image. So, there's, is that the back, it's the left of the alleyway, isn't that the back of the store?
That's correct. And there's a storefront feature there, and we talked about in previous testimony that that may be spandrel panel glass, something like that. So, again, this is looking towards the entrance to that pedestrian space and then stepping back. And so, again, what you see here are the remains of the, the interior mall being reused as the entrance canopy to the supermarket, and then the skylights and portions of the canopies remain as a covered, covering over the sidewalks along that western retail. And that's the last image I have.
Mr. Steves, it's covered through that parking, through that passageway, all the way to the parking lot, right?
That's correct.
The other parking lot?
Yes.
And it's a slight incline on one side, correct?
There, yeah. There will have to be a transition. I think I, you can see it's right in here, and you can see it on the plans. There'll be a ramp at the end and some stairs. It's similar to the condition that exists now.
Just a question, how many doors are there to get into the supermarket space on the, the right there?
Again, that, that's going to depend on how that space gets used.
Oh, depends, yeah. Okay.
Different supermarkets have different configurations at the front of the house, so we follow that.
Are you concluded, Mr. Steves?
I believe that's all I have.
Okay.
I think we're, yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Steves, your, the current configuration, including the parking lot stanchions, the pedestrian walkway, and the maintaining the existing use of the prior train station elements, is much further than anything that had been suggested initially. In fact, it reflects things that had previously been described as impossible to do in the past, which is good. And since you're up here effectively talking about the final plan, I'm going to ask you some questions about this.
Sure.
As you know, the board is being asked to knock down what is a designated historical monument, to take down multiple stanchions and elements that have previously been designated both locally, nationally, and statewide as, as a, as a document, as a monument, as a historical building. The applicant has not presented any client that has made a statement that they can't live with that, so I'm going to have to ask you. You've seen the proposed configuration by the board's architectural consultant to maintain the three levels of stanchions in the parking lot. Has that been reviewed with, with any of the current potential renters based on the proposals that had been put forth to maintain more or most of those stanchions with some covered roofs and have parking under that?
Bruce, before you answer, and I think we'll probably agree to, continue to agree to disagree on this point, I'm just going to just object for the record. There was some phrasing of the question, which I don't want his answer to be deemed a "we acquiesce" to the suggestion that we agree with the characterization you made about the historic nature of what's being proposed. But that being said, I, I think your question goes beyond that, and no need to hopefully spar words over that if he can answer the, the remaining part of the question, which I think is what conversations have happened with the tenant.
So, I don't know specifically what conversations the applicant has had with potential tenants. But I have, I've been asked, and we've talked about the fact that there's two things that the, the tenants, the, the potential tenants or the supermarket occupiers have, and those two concerns are primarily parking and visibility from the street, and those are their two driving factors. They're looking for, they're looking for that identity to be seen from the street, they're looking for people to be able to see their, their shop windows, and then they're looking for convenience parking directly in front of the building. So, those are the things that are controlling how many and what can stay of the, of the canopies in the parking field.
Good. I'm glad you mentioned shop windows. I'm going to jump ahead here because we've kind of been over this in the past, but we're getting down to the short hairs, and so it's time to cut bait, to use many cliches. Mixed metaphors, right.
Sure.
Okay. So, did, did the proposed alternative layout of using the existing stanchions with covered roofs and moving a supermarket sign to the front of that, was that reviewed with one of the two prospective tenants?
I can't say whether that was reviewed, but in our discussions with the project team, again, I was directed, we, we looked at, the concerns that we have with keeping the canopies in place would be that more of the columns would also need to stay in place. So, in order to support the canopy structures, I'm sorry, we would have to have more of the existing columns, and those were the ones that became bothersome or interfered with providing the required parking or more of the required parking.
Did you consider putting on a new replication, new roof that replicated the feel of the old roof and maintaining the existing stanchions?
Our concerns with that, and I'll go back to the parking field, is that the spans that would be required to span the parking columns that could remain would require a significant structure that would be significantly different than what was there and would cloud the reference to-
Supposing there was a lightweight roof with lightweight metal being used decoratively to replicate the feel rather than a full structure?
I understand the, the idea of lightweight, but lightweight also has to take into account all of the wind loads and snow loads that would be required to structurally support that. And when you start to calculate those into those, those factors into the sizing of the structure, it gets significantly large.
So, you're saying you have reviewed the use, potential use of an alternative roof structure, maintaining the existing stanchions, and keeping parking under that, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And what was the result of that?
The result of that is, again, that it's our opinion that if we were to introduce a structural system that could span the distance of the columns that are to remain, that it would be significantly different than the representation of the canopies that are there. And so, it would be an entirely different thing than the canopies that are there.
That doesn't quite answer, but, okay. What about the issue of putting the sign forward of the structure as opposed to back on the wall behind, was that reviewed? In other words, making the corporate identity up front on what you're stating you believe is not going to work as a, as a recreation of, of the canopies?
Right. And again, I think we testified to that last time, like, the structural system and, and the supports that would be required to put the sign out at that level would be different, significantly different than the intention of keeping the canopies in place. We think that the idea of keeping the canopy at the front of the building in place recalls the, the train shed better.
Or platform canopy, just a-
Platform canopy, I'm sorry. The platform canopy better, and it also give, will give the shoppers the experience of standing under the platform canopy.
And what about the need for the actual storefront being seen as opposed to three rows of canopies? Was that a factor in your discussions with tenants?
It was definitely a factor. One of the things that the tenants expressed was that, that they wanted people to be able to see the shop windows from Bloomfield Avenue and from the parking garage lot.
So, is it your testimony that not only the parking issues as it relates to the stanchions and canopies, but the structure, structural issues and the storefront all lead, led you to determining that one pedestrian walkway with canopies was the way to go? Is that what you're, is that your testimony?
That addressed the concerns of, of the client and the tenants, yes.
And on essence balancing the variety of other things we've been discussing over many meetings.
That's correct. I can't say those are the only things that led up to this. All of the, everything that we've been discussing to this point, plus those items.
That's it for now.
Mr. Steves, with the existing stanchions, do you know how many that you removed and not replacing, not reusing?
I do, approximately. There are, there will be sixteen stanchions that will be removed and not be reused.
Other questions from the board? Questions from the public of this witness's testimony?
Kathleen Bennett, 10 Glenwood Road. Mr. Steves, the image you have on the screen now, that is basically what we're looking to the west. That's the hallway or the walkway that's open out for the, from the mall, correct?
Yes.
So, we have the path mark on the right, and, you know, the Popeyes would be on the left, and this is open. When you walk in from the corner and walk to the north, we're this way, there is a significant grade change there, and you've got a very nice even surface back to that store. How are you going to resolve that?
This drawing reflects the grading plan that the civil engineers have designed for the parking area.
Okay. Well, will the stanchions have to be removed in order to get that flat and then replaced? How, I'm just wondering how you're resolving that?
That may have to happen. We really don't know the condition of this, of many of the stanchions. We don't know the condition of the stanchions below the floor slabs that were installed in the shopping center. And so, all of that, as demolition starts, we will have to open up and explore the condition of each column below the slab of the existing retail center. And then, again, I believe the grading is set based on the path mark floor slab, the existing shopping center floor slab, and extended through the parking deck, the parking, but again, the grading would be the question of attention.
That I understand because you can see that when you walk through, but what I don't understand is that you don't have any stairs or, there's stairs that lead up to that.
Right. And those, those appear on our plans on exhibit A43. They were on those drawings as well, as you can see them in-
I only looked at, at these, and I didn't see them anywhere.
Yeah. And so, if you look at here, the-
So, you're actually having stairs there?
There'll be a ramp and stairs, yes.
And why is it, why is, I'm just curious, why you didn't put it on, on this?
It is on this. You can see it at the far end, and this view that you have, that you're holding up, you don't see all the way to the end of that corridor. You only see the, the beginning edge of that corridor.
No, I'm talking about here.
Oh, no, there is no, we're not proposing any ramps or stairs in the front of the parking area. And again, that's-
Where the existing ramps and stairs are now, you're not proposing anything there?
No. My understanding is that the grading of the site is going to be flat in that, relatively flat in the parking field.
Well, I understand that, because you have to have a flat surface for a parking field. But here, where there is an existing stair, you don't have that, how are you accounting for that and the grade change?
I believe that that's all being removed, and it's going to be graded to a flat elevation. And again, I think that may be a better question for the site civil engineer.
You testified that the plaques on the horse trough are going to be bronze. Are those, the ones on the back, will they be bronze as well?
On the back of the horse trough, yes.
Okay. And then, my last question is, the north wall of the Pig and Prince, which is now being transformed into a fast food restaurant, that I peeked in, and that exterior is pretty original. Is there any, you don't have any, any images of that. Is that, is that, is anything going to be done to maintain the character of that exterior of the building to reflect what the other, the three other sites?
Yeah. I don't believe that there's any intention to change the exterior of the building on that side. Again, I don't know that, I don't even know that we need to fix, change the doors. I think the doors that are there now could serve as the, the retail that's proposed.
The client.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that north facade, does that space go all the way to the, to the parking lot, to the west parking lot, or is there a little L-shaped spot there that is closed off?
Again, I believe Mr. Webb described it also, that there is a small room in the back of that space that might be shared between the Pig and Prince and the, the food service area for deliveries and for trash collection and, and removal.
I just wondered if there had been any consideration, and you're part of the architect, to use that corridor space as more of a historic exterior, interior? And maybe you weren't asked to do that.
Not yet, but, you know, maybe as part of the fit up for that tenant, it might be appropriate to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Steves, just by way of clarification, based on what Bennett just asked a moment ago, in terms of, you mentioned the, I guess the, we'll call it the excavation or the removal of the stanchions in conjunction with grading and other work that might potentially have to take place, is it fair to say we're going to use our best efforts to use the, the stanchions that are there today?
Yes. I believe that, again, all of the work that will occur during the renovation and, and the removal process is going to be done carefully, again, to, to understand better the construction and how things, how we're taking things apart so that we don't damage columns.
And, but at the end of the day, to the extent that they're not serviceable, then we would replace in kind, is that the intent?
That's correct. So, again, we don't, a lot of this is, a lot of the columns and, and existing- existing material is concealed behind existing construction. So we really can't visualize, I don't know what's happening underneath the floor slabs that they poured in the shopping center and how that's affected the base plates of the columns and things like that. So to the extent that it's practical and possible, we want to save and reuse those original components. But where it's not, we will replicate in exacting detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike Danamiller, Principal Engineer at NV5. I'm under contract with the municipality. I've been previously sworn. Question about the lighting. You showed beautiful lighting along the alleyway, inferred about 10-foot height, pedestrian scale, close spacing. Will that be mirrored? Will that be extended along other pedestrian accessways such as the walkway out to Bloomfield Ave, the walkway over to the west parking lot, other places where people will walk?
We, we were working with the civil engineer on the interior spaces. The civil engineer has done the exterior lighting, so that's a question I need you to ask.
I got the wrong guy. Sorry.
Other questions from the public?
Civil engineer? And that's Webb, Mr. Webb. Yeah.
Frank Rubacki, 398 Upper Mountain Avenue.
Mr. Webb, yeah. Not on the line.
Can we go back to the last slide in this exhibit, the very last one? My recollection of the shed area that's being left alone for the store facade is that it only has parallel members going the length of the shed. In this rendering, you have perpendicular elements in between the stanchions. Is that something you're adding?
Just to, just to clarify, we're referring to the platform canopy stanchions that are, yeah, yeah, the, yeah.
I don't believe that we will be introducing any new. If those do not exist, then, but I believe there are some horizontal members. Again, that's a pretty long distance to span with just a parallel member.
And I don't know which drawing it was. It was the one that shows in this exhibit, the one that shows the wall with the steps and the ramp.
This one?
No, the steps and the ramp along Grove Street. Do you remember how to use this?
I can figure it out. This one?
This will work. Two questions on this area. What is the thinking to having a pedestrian ramp and adding a pedestrian ramp and adding pedestrian stairs? Why not have just one?
Again, that's probably a better comment directed to the civil engineer. But I know that one of the concerns were people that have carts, that they use shopping carts that they have, that they bring packages home. They might be able to better navigate a ramp within the stairs.
No, I mean, why even have the stairs? I don't understand the stairs. I understand the ramp, I just don't understand the stairs.
The stairs are an homage to the existing stairs that are there.
Okay. So it's, it's an affectation. Okay. I noticed that you cantilevered the existing sheds on the left side or on the west side of the retail. And, but you didn't retain any shed areas, cantilevered or not, on the right side of the Grove Street, even though they would be relatively short and stubby.
At the risk of being impasse, I'm just going to say platform canopies, I think is what you're referring to.
Perfect. I'm glad you said that. So. So the, the supports are somewhere around here and this canopy is over. So my question is, why not do the same?
I'm going to flip back to the last image again, because it shows that the best. There are actually two columns in this location that support the platform canopies. And so there's enough of a balance to allow us to get this cantilever to work. I don't think I can do that with one column on the opposite side.
Okay. And then could we go to, I've asked this question before, but the site plan in your drawings have confused me. If you could go to the Lackawanna Plaza. Actually, let's stay here for a second. Your outline of the terminal building, which is being utilized by the Pig and Prince, is a little bit deceptive in the sense that the portion that they're using for storage is part of this terminal building. It's not part of the train shed.
That's correct.
So why is it?
Platform canopy.
It's not a platform canopy. That's why I'm glad you said platform canopy. It's not a platform canopy. There, there's a lot of mistakes in this area. This is not a platform canopy. Never was, still isn't. The historic preservation expert testified. This is the terminal. This is the shed servicing.
When you say, when you say, just so I'm clear, actually, what do you mean when you say shed?
Can you get the mic too? We can hear you very well.
The original use was this shed was not for passengers per se or people on the train platforms. It was used as a loading dock for bulk freight. And it came around the corner here to, to protect the entrances on this side of the terminal where passengers would exit and go to the train platforms. But this is not the platform. It's been repeatedly mislabeled and misidentified. But your expert identified it, but it never translated to the site plan. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about this area because your expert testified this is the most historic part of the entire site. And yet you're modifying it. Do you understand that you're modifying the most historic part of the site?
I don't believe that we're modifying that.
I need, I need a-
I'm sorry.
Microphone for Mr. Stevie.
I don't believe that the intention is that we're going to modify that. I'm just going to get-
Could you go to A9 or A10?
That's where I'm going. I believe A8 is what I'm looking for. So the area that we're talking about right now is right in here. And so on the model drawing-
Sorry, what, what sheet is that?
This is sheet A8 of exhibit-
Forty-three.
A43. And so right now, the area that Mr. Rubacki is speaking of is this location in here. And this is all part of the train station building.
Actually, it's not, but.
Perhaps I'm not, I'm not using the correct terminology.
No, you're just, don't understand the site. Building, this terminal building, and at the middle.
That's what I was trying to explain.
You were pointing out that this-
I was trying to show that this corner, and I just don't have a steady hand and I apologize, but this corner is the, is the end of the building itself. And then the shed that you're speaking of is located here.
Okay. Here, here's my point. And it's frustrating. All your drawings are wrong. It's as simple as that. And if we had somebody who did an assessment of property, they would know it's wrong. It's obvious. Could you go to A9, please? Could, I'm sorry. Yes. Could you zoom on the middle section, terminal building? And this is important. I, I think you need to understand this. Because it's-
You say you believe they're wrong.
I know they're wrong. As, as an only alignment, I know. This is the terminal building. It has one continuous, this is the exterior wall of the terminal building. The shed servicing this facade turns the corner and services the north facade. Here, you show an extension of the terminal that I call modification to a historic landmark. I don't understand this. We haven't spoken to this. Looks like brick, looks like stone, looks like a duplication of this. But this is not part of the roof. This is not a building per se. Yes, it's part of the shed area. But this whole section here is made up.
I understand that.
Do you understand? Okay. So, and you did that, why?
Because this is currently indoor shopping center right now. So this is currently dry wall and-
And to that, to that point, I'm going to object to the, just, we're not acknowledging the statement that you're making that, that that's a historic landmark or part of the historic building. But I'll let Mr. Stevie answer.
I think the question was, Mr. Stevie, why did you do, why did you make the modification?
So again, we are using this as a transition area between the existing building and the proposed building. It's currently constructed of materials that are not suitable for the exterior of the building. So we're going to clad them in materials that are suitable for the exterior of the building. And again, in keeping with the character of the historic property as well as the new prop-
But that space is already, that space is already enclosed as it's currently constructed, correct?
That's correct.
So you're not changing anything. You're just changing the facing, basically what's along the sidewalk. That's the only thing that you've changed.
That's correct.
What's there, is it from a planning point of view? I understand.
Well, that, we're trying, we're trying to understand from a factual point of view, exactly what-
And I'm trying to explain the factual point.
Well, well, we're, again, we're all confused.
Mr. Stevie, that, that's part of the interior mall now.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's, let's break it down into little pieces. Is the existing brick of that section to the right there now?
No.
Is that, does that exist right now?
No.
So that, you are modifying the existing exterior structure and proposing to replicate it similarly to what is there to the left of that. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair, it's a transitional, it's a transitional detail between the, the train shed building and the new architectural facade of the retail.
Do you have a picture of what is there now?
I may have a picture. I would have to search for it.
But that's current, that area is currently inside the mall.
Currently, inside the mall.
And it's a storefront. It's the first storefront, correct?
That's correct. It's storefront and it's, it's interior finished.
And I think that was, was originally, the last thing that was there was an eyeglass place?
So what's on the outside right now? Brick?
No, on the outside, it's storefront. No, it was a storefront, it was glass.
It's glass.
Right. And they're removing the mall structure in front of all of it. Because right now, that's inside the mall.
Right.
The mall, the mall starts, those two doors-
Are outside.
Are outside. And then there's a wall and the inside starts from there. But the, so the only difference to the current structure now is that the mall is being removed from, from the station all the way along the west side. So all those storefronts that were formerly inside the mall will now be exposed to the parking lot. And that first storefront, which was originally a glass storefront, is the, the facade of it is being made to mirror the facade of the adjacent station. So that it transitions to, because that's not going to be a storefront. The storefronts will go from this, from, from, from the, from the next storefront end.
So we're extending, we're extending the brick of what was the terminal that is now Pig and Prince.
That's correct.
Going, let's see what direction is that, going-
North.
Going east.
East.
We're extending the brick, that's what you're proposing. You're, you're modifying the, what Frank is saying is that that is part of the original historic building that's been designated. You are proposing to demo or modify that piece on the exterior and brick that replicating the brick to the left.
Correct.
The brick treatment to the left. And then you are modifying the interior elements of that, creating effectively storefronts now going north.
That's correct.
The only- And that piece that's adjacent to the train station is already enclosed and already has a door that faces on Lackawanna Plaza on the, on the other side, right?
Yes.
That you can see from the others, from, from the small parking lot. And the, what would be, I guess, the windows are blacked out.
That's correct.
And the door is blacked out. But you can, you can see it on Google Maps.
So you're changing the symmetry of that building because it looks like there are two main sections, a little bit to the left, and you're extending the one to the right. You're modifying the exterior of that-
Just the, just the, it's just the exterior facade because the internal space is already there. And was already modified.
And Mr. Stevie-
And you're losing the whole mall. You're losing the whole mall enclosure. Right. No, no. That, that was, that mall was not part of the original waiting room. That was added in, in the renovation.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I think most of that was correct. I just want to clarify for the exterior, that what's there now versus what we're replacing it to now, what is there now is not original to the train station from-
It's a storefront.
Right. That was, that was done with the, that was done with the modification back in the eighties.
Correct. Just wanted to clarify that.
Do you still have an issue? Or you disagree with that? Or what's wrong with that?
Well, okay, let me start, let me just ask a question.
No, no. Why don't you, no, no. Why don't you answer my question? What's wrong with that? What's wrong with the, with the way that it's been outlined so far?
You called this a transitional element. From historic preservation, federal standards.
Aside from-
Do you want an answer?
You're not answering my question.
I'm trying to.
No, well, you're not answering my question. Because I asked you in terms of what was just described. And nowhere along that description did anybody say, did I say or anybody else say, that that was part of the historical, what was historically designated, or bring up any mention of historical designation. The only thing that we said was basically that there was a new facade put on what is currently an existing structure. Now, is that, is that right or wrong?
No, it's not right. It's wrong.
What's, what's wrong with that?
From an architectural point of view, how are you going to turn the corner here?
What's wrong with that?
It's going to impact the, the corner design of this building. It's going to change the look of this building. They're going to use new-
It's already been changed because there's a mall entrance right there. It's already been changed.
Yes, but they're demo, they're demolishing the, that, the detriment. And now you're going to replace it with another detriment.
So that's your, that's what your point is. You're saying that what they're replacing it with, because it's already been, it's already been impacted. And what you're saying is that instead of restoring it back to the original, they're replacing it with something else that impacts it.
I'm not saying we restore it back to the original. Not at all. You're not listening to me. I wish you would listen to me.
I am listening to you.
No, no.
But I'm trying to understand what you're saying and you're, you're being obtuse, as usual.
Let me try to finish. Okay? It's not a question about restoring something. It's a question of leaving this alone. That's the question. You leave the building alone. And you don't have enough detail with what is being presented tonight to form the opinion you're forming. You are prejudging this based on your own recollection of the building. You're not-
And you're not?
Well, I have a little bit of HBC experience and I do know the building.
Well, you know what? You're not the only person in this room that has experience with that building. So it doesn't qualify you as any more of an expert than me or anybody else sitting on this board.
I'm not saying I'm any more of an expert. I said I understand the building.
I understand the building too. And I think I understand the building just as much as you do.
We're just going to disagree. All I'm saying is, the HBC should have addressed this. They didn't. You have a chance to address it. You're not. We're doing it right now. Fine. I made my point.
Good. Well, no, good. He's made his point. I think we all understand what he said. Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I do.
Good. Please get on with them.
Can we go to A10? Could you zoom in on the middle section? In the center left, or now the left, where it says open? Is that truly- Is that truly an open space, or is that just a representation of what's behind?
You gotta use your microphone so that you can be heard?
Is where it says open, right next to AutoCAD SXX text. Could you point to it? Is that truly open, or is that a representation of what's behind?
That is the walkway going through.
So that is open?
Yes.
Okay. So you are demolishing the brick and stone and window element of that corner?
No, I believe that's in this corner.
It's not. See this element here? That's original. That element is here with the stone wall. This is open, there's no such brick currently there. Obviously, you're adding brick, fine, but you're demolishing another historic part.
Mr. Rebecca, are you stating that the existing conditions have not been accurately reflected on these plans?
Yes.
Is that what you're stating?
He stated that more than once.
Yes.
So I think we understand that that's his position.
And we're ten months in, and we're still having these problems, and I've pointed this out previously, and we still have these problems. So you understand my frustration?
I did.
By the way, I'm just gonna object for the record, to the extent you're referring to the mall, we, we don't concede that that is historic. It's, that's the mall that was modified in the eighties.
Do you have a picture of this elevation? An existing picture of this?
I can find a picture of this, I don't have one.
All right. Well, why don't we table this further discussion until we can get some more accurate representations of photographs of that part of the mall to see what's changed and what hasn't changed? Ma'am, go ahead.
I think this will be helpful. So Ashelman Label Street. Have we seen an inventory yet of all elements on the site? Because I feel this conversation would be a lot more fruitful if we could, everybody could be referring to the same central list, documents, ages, photographs. Because for those of us who care about history, the thought of you going in there, and I don't know, making decisions on the fly, I don't know, if we don't decide it now with consensus, it's hard to understand that we'll get the output everybody's envisioning. So can we get that inventory if it hasn't been provided yet with every single element on this national, federal, and locally listed historical site? Thank you.
I, we, we object, and there's been information provided.
Well, I don't know what you're objecting to, because I, unless I'm, my memory is...
I'm object, I'm objective to the notion, I guess I would say, if, if the question is, if she's taking the position, and I don't agree with it, that literally every pebble that is on that site is on the National Historic Register, have we inventoried every pebble?
That's, that's not what she's, she said. I believe at some point that you were supposed to put an inventory of all elements together and provide that. I think that's what she's stating. I remember that coming up in discussion, so that we could, so that we could make clear decisions about the elements on the site. Nobody was asking for every little pebble and stone.
In an effort to resolve, we, we believe it's already been presented, but in an effort to resolve it, we'll try and collate what's been presented.
Thank you, Counselor. Ma'am, come on.
Caroline Kane Levy from thirty-seven Artsley Road. An alternate scheme that preserved the train sheds as they are now in place might very well qualify for historic preservation tax credits, twenty percent tax credits through federal tax credits. And I wanted to know if that was something that you investigated, and if so, why, why didn't you wanna pursue that?
It's, it was investigated, but based upon the variety of testimony that's been provided to the Board to date regarding the requirements and why are we proposing the site plan proposal that we're proposing, that's not, it's not something we're prepared to proceed with at this time.
And did you actually do some number crunching to see what, how generous those would have been? Because they tend to be very generous.
I don't know.
Again, it's, but it's, it becomes a non-issue because of the, again, of the variety of testimony that's been provided regarding the site plan that we are proposing, the site plan that we are proposing does not, does not, does not approach what is being suggested as far as a program that would allow us to pursue that type of tax credit.
I don't know if you got that Caroline, but I don't really understand what you just said.
So, I mean, to be...
Perfectly blunt about it, yeah.
To be, to be perfectly blunt, there's been, there have been comments made that we should design a different site plan than what we're proposing, but we're not inclined to design a different site plan. We've stated a variety of reasons for that over the preceding eight months. That's pretty much the answer.
But Ms. Kane Levy asked you a specific question. Did you investigate the, the tax credits that you could receive if you had left this without any, I guess...
I think it'd be best to answer that, because I was actually the one who asked that same question of our historical expert. And because there never were any train sheds, not Bush train sheds or any train sheds, there were these stanchions with concrete platforms on, concrete slabs on top of them on the platforms. The developer in the nineteen eighties closed them with glass and other, and different folks called them sheds, they never were. Because they were never sheds, and they're never determined to be historical, if we attempted to even use them, which by the way was moot, because there is no food store that was interested in these, which we've said many times, we wouldn't be able to qualify for any type of historic tax credits. Not sure what they are today and where they are under the new tax law.
They're, they're twenty percent, and they're still available.
But they're not available when you, first of all, they're not available if we can't use them, which we can't, because we can't build a food store around them. We've said this, I don't know if you were at those meetings, maybe you weren't, so in fairness to you. However, they're not historical elements. Our historical architect, I don't know if you heard, Dr. Bettrick is a PhD in historical architecture, worked extensively in this field and testified. I'm not testifying for him, I'm just repeating it. These were utilitarian items that were not part of the register, and actually our planner is gonna speak to it further tonight, but you asked, we investigated...
Well, they are part of the designated site, and they are on the National Register.
They are not, the stanchions, we respectfully disagree.
We do disagree.
Our expert has done research, he has testified, and he has been very, very clear in his testimony, in fact, there's gonna be further testimony from our planner tonight.
Did anyone speak to the State Office for Historic Preservation?
Our expert spoke to him. I don't know if you were here when he spoke, he was here for about two hours or two and a half hours, I can't remember everything he said.
I don't remember him saying anything.
I believe he did everything he needs to do at the state and federal level to make an accurate testimony to this Board.
Okay. Thank you.
I remember at some point, three or four meetings at least back, where there was information concerning the nineteen eighty renovation and the details of that. I appreciated it between now and the next meeting, if you can supply that information. If you haven't, and if you have already, you know, if you can, if you can guide Janice to where it is in the exhibits. It's not formally entered in the exhibit.
I think, I think there were discreet pages that were part of Dr. Bettrick's testimony, but we can submit the entire set of plans.
Right, because I mean, the question, the question of what was and what wasn't affected by that, you know, has now been brought into question.
Happy to provide.
And I think that that might clear, clear it up.
And it, yeah, it goes back to the August sixth meeting. It was just a request to know of the ninety-eight, the seventy-four that are remaining in place, the eight that will move, and the sixteen that will be discarded, if we could just show where those are on a single view that's not in dispute.
So that we actually...
I think it was, it was produced.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one of our...
Seven eight, I mean, it's A thirty-two.
Uh, yes.
Do we have further questions of this witness from the public? Hurry up. You, you are up and down in the back, David, just gonna ask a question, come on up, and let's keep it moving. Of course, it is getting late.
So I'm just gonna ask one question. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Stevie, who I believe is still under oath. Mr. Stevie.
Pause for dramatic effect.
Can you please tell me if in your expert opinion, as a trained architect, that this building, Lackawanna Train Station, is not a historic building?
Uh, I think you might need to clarify that question, what building?
The site of the Lackawanna Train Station, which includes the train track sheds, I say sheds, let's call them the covers...
Platform canopies.
Platform canopies. Do you consider those elements in the, in the whole context of the project historic?
So, Mr. Stevie, you can answer if you can, although I think we've never qualified you as a historic architect, have we?
No.
So I, I think we'd be asking him in his lay opinion.
Well, that's fine, but he...
I think the testimony that's not on the record so far, just to keep this moving along, has been that there's not disagreement with respect to the train station itself. The disagreement insofar as, as what's historic and what's not historic relates to what we've been calling the train sheds, what the applicant is referring to as the, the platform covers, tomato, tomato. That's where, that's the point, if you can.
Well, I think they also made a point too, just to, to just make sure we flush this out. Their expert also said if in fact there was, if it was historic at one time, they made the argument that it has lost its integrity due to the renovation that was taking place in the eighties. So those are the two points.
It's been altered to the point where, and they also said, if you wanna take that along, that it's, if it could be restored, then you could go back to square one with the historic, with historic relevance.
Right, so the question...
If it could be restored. But those are all leads to different questions, other questions.
Right. So I would happen to think that Mr. Stevie is qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, well, that's, but that's not a qualification that you can, you can bestow on him. The applicant has not qualified him as a historic preservation expert. He's testifying as an architect, so it's not a fair question. Any other questions from the public? We're gonna take a five, five-minute recess.
So for our next witness, we have Carl Pankey from Langin Engineering. Mr. Pankey has previously been sworn in. And, Mr. Pankey, you've, there's an exhibit on the board which I believe is the photograph that's in the Pro Park report, if that's correct.
We always have to remind you that we're still under oath.
Yeah, yes, I recognize.
It's our job, that's what we do.
And I, Janice, I think we haven't marked this, but if you wanna mark A forty-five...
Well, we, I've got two items here, I think. You wanna mark the letter or not? The letter November fifteenth and the parking study, and then we also have the parking...
We might as well, yeah, let's do all three, 'cause it's, yeah.
Okay. So A forty-five will be the letter from Langin Engineering dated November fifteenth, and A forty-six will be the parking study from Langin Engineering dated November thirteenth, and then A forty-seven will be the parking plan dated November fifteenth, prepared by Pro Park America.
So, Mr. Pankey, without standing on ceremony, could you give the Board the benefit of what we revisited and what we'd like to propose since we were last here?
Certainly, since, since we were last here, we accomplished several things. I had the opportunity to coordinate our documents with Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb earlier this evening described some of the changes to the plan, particularly adjustments to the building size behind the grocer, which has reduced the total retail square footage a little bit. The use of the seventy-six hundred building, which we were previously anticipating was occupied all by Pig and Prince, being used by all restaurants still, but it's Pig and Prince and, and a fast, fast food or fast service restaurant, where before we were thinking of putting fast service into another portion of the retail area. So we've made those adjustments to the parking plan and parking analysis, and that's documented in my parking study and management plan dated November thirteen, revised to November thirteenth of two thousand and eighteen.
Which we just marked as A forty... Eight forty-six.
Correct. And also during that timeframe, I had the opportunity to, to interact with your parking consultant, Mr. Giosa, and to receive his input into the parking plan and thoughts on the project and the parking management plan and, and parking sufficiency. And also importantly, I had the opportunity to further interact with Mr. Sokic of Pro Park and work with his expertise in actually managing, real-life management of many parking facilities that he has been involved with through the years, as well as work with him and coordinate with him on the preparation of the document that he submitted, which is actually the, the layout of how he would operate the, the, the parking facilities. So from a, from a high-end perspective, from a parking supply standpoint, shared parking analysis, which we've prepared for this site, what we've focused on in the latest plan is identifying the peak periods that supply is needed to accommodate the, within the bands. And basically, you'll find in this report, unlike the previous reports, that I went further than in the past, rather than just identifying the one peak period, we focused on identifying when it would peak, midday during a weekday, evening during a weekday, midday during a Saturday, evening on a Saturday, to make sure we were finding all the different peak periods and then focusing on, on, on the highest peak. The highest peak does actually occur on a weekday at six PM, and then secondarily, midday around one o'clock on a, on a weekday. So we evaluated all of that data in preparation of the management plan. Overall, what the shared, shed parking analysis is showing is that physically throughout the entire project, the four hundred and fifty-nine total spaces, which are allocated by thirty spaces in what we call the Lackawanna Lot, a hundred and ninety-nine spaces in the West Lot, and two hundred and thirty spaces, which is a combination of surface spaces and underbuilding spaces in the East Lot, we are providing a sufficient supply overall to accommodate the calculated supply that we need based upon the shared parking methodologies during all of the peak periods. What we also found, you know, as, and as we've testified in the past, is we need to manage that supply, because a proportionate portion of that supply is in the East Lot, and we need to be able to manage into that lot. So we're doing that in two ways. There's two parts of the parking ma, the parking management plan. One is purely a management of, of the employees of the grocer, retail, restaurants, and the medical office building, and simply the assignment for parking of those employees into the East Lot. There will be, the retail restaurant employees would be assigned into using the surface lot and the East Lot, the hundred space lot. The medical office building offers would have access to utilize... The medical office building offers would have access to utilizing the available spaces in the underbuilding parking lot. So, we're managing off the bat that. And that would be managed through Pro Park. Pro Park would issue stickers for long-term parkers, for those various components, residents, the employees, so that they can monitor the, that parking and control, control that parking. The second component of the valet pla, of the parking management plan is, is a valet operation. And what we're proposing to do is use the valet operation both to utilize the excess spaces that we're finding are occurring in the East Lot, so valeting people that wanna be patrons of or visitors to or patients of the M.O.B. in, towards the West, and valet them to the East Lot. And what we're also proposing to do is, is maximize the efficiency and utilization of the Lackawanna Lot. We think there's an opportunity to utilize that parking lot in a more efficient manner, since that would be the, the logical location to operate the valet. We would also manage that lot and, and use that lot to the maximum extent practical. What we presented in Mr., in Pro Park's plan was a plan that we worked up together, and it's shown on the screen to my right, and I don't know if we have to mark that as an exhibit or it's incorporated by reference in Pro Park's.
I think it's in A forty-seven. You haven't changed it from?
It hasn't changed from A forty-seven.
Okay.
So, the, the plan is to, to use the Lackawanna Pla, Plaza Lot as the origination of the valet operations in front of the, the M.O.B. I've worked with Mr. Sokich on developing this plan. It's a plan that he is very comfortable, that he can operate. It's not inconsistent with what he does at other locations. And basically, what we were able to do in this lot is take the thirty spaces that exist by normal striping and operate it efficiently with additional spaces. And actually, what I gotta do, do is correct for the record. The actual add is seventeen spaces for a total of forty-seven spaces, and I'll explain the, the, the change in that calculation and why. So, we would add those spaces by two mechanisms. One is, there is a series of six spaces today that are striped here. There's two spaces head in at this location, and there's four spaces head in at this location. Pro Park can more efficiently use that area and actually take that six spaces, and by parallel parking them into the curb, create eight spaces in that area, increasing, increasing that supply. And then-
Sir, I want to interrupt you just for a second, so we have the context here. You've just proposed a new eighteen-hundred-square-foot fast-food restaurant. Where do you anticipate those cars to be going?
Well, let me, let me go through the plan first, and then we can talk about that. I did hear the prior testimony. It's, it's not a new component. We were always considering some fast food in there. It's just a matter of where, where it's located at this point, but I can address that, that, that question.
Well, you, you've created an additional space. You didn't anticipate having that.
Well, the space was always there. We were always accounting for that space. That space in the past was accounted for as seventy-six-hundred-square-foot of fast and casual restaurant. Now, it's accounted for as about fifty-eight-hundred of fast and casual and eighteen-hundred of, of the fast food. So, that's, it's always been-
Aren't we really splitting hairs here? If you add another restaurant, either for the pizza place or whatever it is, you're creating a whole different parking demand from that, even if the calculations by square footage don't require anymore. You're, you're adding another business there. So, I'm, I'm asking you, just so we have it in our heads as you go through this.
Sure.
Where do you anticipate the new space, the new added space for a new retail element? Where do you anticipate those folks parking right now?
Okay, so there's two components to, to that answer. Not unlike your downtown area with the mid, with the Midtown Parking Plaza, which supports the businesses along Bloomfield Avenue. The West Parking Lot will support the businesses along Lackawanna Plaza, as well as the valet. There's no one gonna stop somebody coming in and using a valet or quick, or having a quick turnover park in this area with the valet operator. The other part of that answer is when you were questioning Mr. Webb regarding access, he was correct in explaining that the existing access to that space is in this location. He also explained the common space back in this location. To, to be honest with you, at this point in time, in talking with the, the owner, the final demising lines of that eighteen-hundred space could include and may include an access to the West Lot. So, aside from potentially that access to the West Lot existing, not unlike your downtown, they also have the ability for the, the walk-through along both sides of the building to, to, to access the site. So, the West Lot is absolutely supporting all of the retailers along this side of the building, consistent with what happens in a downtown area.
So, just, sorry.
Sure.
That additional sliver that we've uncovered this meeting, the, the shared space there for trash disposal and deliveries was testified to earlier. So, are you suggesting that that could be removed from the, you know, the plan?
No.
How would you get it?
That space back here can be configured between the two in multiple ways. A car, a carter into the, into the, into the eighteen-hundred-square-foot space, plus a back-of-the-house space for both facilities. Those, the interior, interior demising walls haven't been worked out yet. The specific tenant leases haven't been worked out, so certainly the tenant's gonna have input on how he wants to operate it. But there is, what I'm pointing out is, the opportunity is there based upon what the tenant may want to, to be a successful operator, as well as what the owner needs to do in, in terms of his overall leases. So, this space is not blocked from that type of access, both from a loading standpoint and/or some sort of access to the West Lot. There's many ways that that space can be demised.
Just let me point something out. It's more than just that fast-food restaurant. The spaces in front of, this is all gonna be retail.
Yes.
And the retail's all gonna be accessed per your plans from this parking lot.
They can be accessed from this parking lot, or they can come in through the West Lot and walk through the building or around the building.
Right now, the entrances to that, those stores are from this parking lot.
That's my understanding, yes. That's, that's the frontage on Lackawanna.
Right.
So, those little dots are, are doors to stores?
No, those are columns. The, the store line's actually back behind the canopy.
But that was ours, where the stores are.
So, where the entrances to those stores?
They're the front entrances. This is the front entrance to those stores.
There's six stores. Where those cars are?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're back in here. The building wall is back further. There's a plaza there.
And, and did you state that the valet parking that's associated with medical office building, that could be used for the retail uses of those stores as well?
Sure, there's the opportunity for these spaces to be utilized and managed by the bell cap, by the valet captain in attendance at this location for people that wanna come in and tell them, "We're only gonna be here ten minutes." Manage me in those spaces. So, so what'll happen under a valet operation plan is the valet captain will greet the person that comes in, determine whether they're a short-term parker or a longer-term parker. If they're a longer-term parker and the demand is needed, we don't have, you know, we're meeting peak demands that we need it, that longer-term parker would be moved to the East Lot. The shorter-term turnovers would be valeted into, into this lot.
How many cars, how many cars are in that lot, as you're depicting it?
On this lot, there's, there's thirty striped under a self-park scenario and up to forty-seven under the, the scenario shown here.
So, with that, how often do you anticipate that forty-seven-car scenario occurring during the course of the week?
So, what we're seeing is a midday, mid-afternoon to evening hour weekday is when our higher parking supply requirements are existing. So, that's when it could-
Give me some times, please.
Call it between eleven and six P.M. on a weekday. Eleven A.M. and six P.M.
So, for seven hours, you have the potential to have a parking lot that looks like a used car lot, parking, storage lot.
So-
On, that's, that's right in front of the entrances to stores on the commercial, facing the Commercial Street.
Mr. Pankey, I think you were about to change the slide.
Yeah, there's, there's two things I wanted to do. I wanted to talk about the East Lot a little, but we did, we did consider-
Well, I don't wanna talk about the East Lot, because this is, this is terrible.
That's fine, so we did-
So, why, why am I gonna go on to talk about the East Lot when this is terrible? What are you gonna, what can you do to change?
We do have another exhibit where we looked at a reduced utilization of this area, so I'd like to bring that up.
The people who work in the medical off, where will they park?
The people that work in the medical will park under the residential building.
You know, I'd also like to add that there are ten businesses on the other side of Lackawanna Plaza. Where do those people park? Right now, I guess, if you're moving cars around, you're gonna have to utilize the street. I can't imagine that you wouldn't try to park-
There's the public metered parking there at the square.
Yeah, but, right, right. There just isn't enough parking for everybody.
There's metered parking along the street there.
There's twenty-six parking, yeah.
Which is why we would propose a valet operation on this, on this site.
And that's free valet parking?
Uh, the, the actual, the cost of it is something to be worked out by the management of the facility, how they wanna handle that, whether it's incorporated in leases or some other way. So, we did consider, what we knew would be a concern, and working with Mr. Sokich, we also looked at an alternative, which would basically reduce the, the way we park this facility. We would look at an add of eleven spaces for a total of forty-one spaces, which would basically keep the area that's used for the staging for the valet, and then one, a single row of, of valeted vehicles in this location, with again, the overflow going to the East Lot, so.
Carl, and just to interrupt you for a second, you're, so you're referring to actually a new exhibit, Janice?
Yeah, we need to mark this, correct.
We would mark this as Exhibit A forty-eight, I guess amended.
So, so Exhibit A forty-eight is entitled Valet Parking, Alternate A, Exhibit Lackawanna Plaza Lot, dated eleven twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Do we have that?
No, it hasn't been submitted. We just worked that up.
Is there a plan for no valet parking and just have those empty, and have those spots people pull in and out like a regular parking lot?
Well, during weekend, we would have-
Through their medical office building and having just the regular spaces filled with cars?
Mm-hmm.
With no double-park cars, no double-stack cars, no-
You mean valet parking going all to the East Lot, yeah.
Anything that doesn't fit in a, any regular lot gets valet parked.
Yep.
How about that?
Yep. Somewhere else.
Yep.
Somewhere else.
Yep.
Well, obviously, you know, it, it can't be, it can't be parked there, you know, because you have to, you have to allow spaces for this, for the storefronts that are there, because otherwise, you know, people, people, just the very nature of people, if there's no place to park, that's, that's immediate access. You know, they don't, they don't wanna walk. They'll walk to a point, but you can't have a constant, you can't have all those spaces filled up with cars.
No.
That's gonna impact, that's gonna impact the viability of those stores.
Well-
Not to mention the aesthetics, this, of people walking on the street, and that's, and, and the stores are on the other side of Lackawanna Plaza.
And Crane Park is there.
Yeah, that's aesthetically, that's outrage, it's outrageous. It's outrageous.
Where do you put medical vans? You know, they have to pull up and let somebody off if you're staging cars right in front of the entrance there.
Well, the medical vans would have the opportunity to move in and out of the, the handicap spaces.
Except you have them blocked.
Well, you gotta keep in mind, this, this is an operating valet system by Pro Park that knows what they're doing. There's an attendant there at all times, and those vehicles can be moved. This is not uncommon. It's not unusual. It is a downtown area.
It's not common on the street.
We're not, we're not on a s-
It might be common in a, in a, in a medical office, a parking lot or hospital parking lot, but you, you're on the street here, and this is a very small, very small lot, right up on the sidewalk.
And, and what our, what our proposition is, as a result of the loss of thirty spaces in the main West Lot that we did to save the stanchions, is to, is to undertake a valet operation to utilize the excess spaces that we have in the East Lot, but we also would like and need and believe in, and are comfortable as the owner that they can lease these spaces and make it work, but have some ability to valet into this lot to maximize the efficiency. Because the reality is, what we believe is that for the most part, we'll be able to accomplish what we need to do in this lot without having to go in too often in the East Lot. Well, this is, this is what we-
That's what we're talking about, in real life. I, nobody's questioning whether or not you can make this work. It's just gonna look like hell while you're doing it, and that's the problem.
Well, I don't, you know, I, I mean, that aesthetics is point of view, I mean-
Aesthetics is very important, obviously. We've had, we've talked more than half of these meetings about some element of aesthetics or not. And you can't have a nice building with a, with a used car lot parked in front of it. Come on! You've got an historic train station, and then you're gonna have forty-seven cars jammed into this little lot, and that are gonna be constantly moving around, because people are gonna be coming in and out.
So-
And it's, and it's, you're on Lackawanna Plaza, you've got nice buildings across the street, you've got a park there, you've got people who are doing, trying to engage their businesses and make, you know, make a good shopping scenario for them across the street, and you're gonna double-stack and triple-stack cars.
For the place to get to the East Lot. Yeah.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I, you know, this is what we believe works for us. We both believe it would be good for the town. However, at the board's discretion, we can leave this as a thirty-place space lot. We do need an area to valet stage, and we'll valet to the East Lot.
That would, something like that would seem to be the reaction of at least enough four members here. Anything you have, if you were, if you could show that you're parking during that six o'clock, that eleven o'clock to six o'clock, maybe the West Lot on the other side isn't filling up, and so maybe those spots that are closest to Bloomfield Avenue aren't filling up. You could, you can, you can valet park there, you know, but it has to be something that's actively managed, you know, but-
We would accept that flexibility, 'cause we would like a little bit of flexibility to manage it, because we do believe that we have enough spaces. We do believe some of the excess spaces are in the East Lot, which creates a little bit of a challenge for us, which we're overcoming by putting all our employees at that location. But, you know, on the, at, at the end of the day, we believe we have enough spaces that we can manage.
I think you have to show us the worst-case scenario. So, if you had to park everybody in the East Lot, how are you gonna?
Well, if we park everybody in the East-
And if you can't park everybody in the East Lot, then what's the worst-case scenario? How much of the West Lot do you have to use? How much of the Lackaw, how much of the Lackawanna Plaza do you have to use? I mean, if you wanted, some of it is designated for valet parking, you know.
And you could be explicit where, where you'd have the valet.
So, I'm gonna introduce another exhibit.
Just since we're talking about that, I'd also like to know how many employees you're gonna have during your times when you're operating from eight to seven.
Sure, so that is in the parking management plan. The, the employee counts, well, the parked employee cars are actually called out by use. If you look at the tables on pages three, four, and five. Now, that's Pro Park.
Oh, your plan, oh, okay.
You'll, you'll see in the tables that we identify the retail customers, retail employees, restaurant customers, and that specifically pulls out the number of spaces we anticipate parked.
No, the employee, Pro Park employees who'll be operating this, yeah.
So, Pro Park would have a valet captain?
Yeah. And then said, as needed, you have other-
As needed, he would, you know, he could do it with one at low periods. He may need two or three at higher periods. So, he will staff it based upon the demand periods, what it takes him to get the cars back and forth from the East Lot in an efficient manner.
Well, I think what the chair was saying is that if, that this area needs to look good, but you have the use of the, of the West Lot to put cars into, if it's not filled there, and there and that location, the way you're going to be focused on, if this area is gonna look like a used car lot, that's not acceptable.
So- So, so Carl, I think, but what we've, I think what we're proposing is that we're, to, to answer Mr. Schwartz's point, we're not going to double-park or double-stack or whatever other expression into the Lackawanna Lot.
Into the Lackawanna Lot.
There is thirty self-park spaces that currently exist in the Lackawanna Lot. Those could be utilized, but that won't be the used car lot effect, because it's thirty self-park spaces that are there now. And then, to the extent that there's valet beyond those thirty spaces, that those cars would be moved, either to the chairman's point, if there's availability in the West Lot during a low period, they could be moved to the West Lot, or in a period where the West Lot's not available, they get moved to the East Lot, and I think what you're about to show-
Right.
-is the exhibit, which is from a, sorry, which is from-
A forty-seven.
A forty-seven, which shows where the cars would go in the East Lot when the valet moves them to the East Lot.
Right, so there's, there's two things happening in the East Lot. So, in the East Lot, we're looking to use the excess spaces, and there's excess spaces in the surface lot. What we found in our analysis is that the, the East Lot is underutilized, both on the surface lot and underbuilding lot. When I, when I spoke to Mr. Giosa this week, what we talked about was using excess spaces and providing- Uh, when I, when I spoke to Mr. Giosa this week, what we talked about was using excess spaces and providing valet, the, the ability to use excess spaces that are under the building during the daytime hours when the residents are basically out. Uh, there will still be excess spaces aside from the medical office, uh, employees that are parked in there. Uh, and then we would designate two areas for valet use by Pro Park. One is the most remote spaces down by Bloomfield Avenue, and that would be basically just using the standard spaces, because there'll be excess, and he would use that area to store vehicles. And then what we found in looking at our plan is we really had a very convenient area, uh, where we can use both a combination of eighteen existing spaces and give to Pro Park the ability to actually, uh, create additional spaces. While we don't actually need those, it gives them some flexibility, uh, to provide an additional nine spaces if, if he needs to in this area with staging areas for him to work the cars. So those are the areas we would designate for use by Pro Park, which would be the eight spaces closest to Bloomfield Avenue, what I call, uh, the inside of the elbow or dead-end area, uh, in the middle of the lot. So it's hidden from Bloomfield, and it's hidden from, uh, Grove, and it's hidden from, uh, Glen Ridge. And then he, they would also, Pro Park would also have access to the underbuilding. So those are what would become available for the valet operations into, uh, the east lot.
So, in that east lot, how many, what provisions are we going to make for the rest?
So that's incorporated in our numbers. Uh, so, so when we run.
Will there be spaces designated?
Yes, so, so, no, no, nothing. In a shared parking format, you don't, you don't actually specifically designate spaces. So visitors would share into the remaining surface lot. So our calculations before carving out what's available for, uh, Pro Park to use incorporates all of the parking that would occur associated with, uh, retail and restaurant employees parked here, as well as the, the visitor needs of the residential during a day, a typical day, and that's all baked into our calculations.
So, you, you had said that you were gonna have decals for the medical office, the employees, the, uh, you know, the people that you could have decals or some kind of.
Correct.
But visitors don't have that.
No, they don't, but they would be able, this is a self-park lot.
So they just come in and they, I mean, I.
Find a space.
And no one's monitoring if they're actually going into the buildings? They could be walking to the train station?
Well, yeah, part of Pro Park's job will be to do two things, uh, to watch the west lot, to make sure it's not being used by long-term parkers. So that's done, uh, by, uh, monitoring of the lots. And certainly, one of the things that management of this property is gonna have Pro Park do is to, to watch to make sure that external users are not using the lot. So that's gonna be an ongoing management, uh, of the lots, and that's gonna be at the expense of the owner, uh, through a management firm that knows how to watch and monitor these types of operations.
Carl, fair to say if there were, from an operational standpoint, I think to what you just mentioned, if somebody was coming to visit, a resident, uh, occupying the, uh, the residential building in the east lot, that that resident would, i- in advance, register in some capacity the visitors coming so that Pro Park would be able to know that that visitor's there and monitor.
We don't need that. The, the lots are self-parked. The, the way we've designed this, the way the numbers are working out, is a resident will be able to arrive and he'll find a, a surface spot available. We, we don't need to manage the entire surface lot, uh, on the east lot, uh, from a valet standpoint.
I would imagine a visitor might have to register in the lobby to see somebody, so you could have some kind of communication with Pro Park, I think.
That's, that's.
That's what you're driving at there.
That's what we're thinking, and, and I think to answer your point about the, sort of, knowing the difference between somebody who's not supposed to be there versus somebody who's an actual visitor.
So part of Pro Park's, um, monitoring job would be looking for the, for the decals or stickers in the cars?
That's correct. Making sure that the right people are in the right spaces. If they're seeing, uh, for instance, if, if they're seeing on a regular basis a, a series of vehicles parked here for extended periods of time, they don't have a resident employee sticker, they're gonna figure, they're gonna be able to figure out or track down who those vehicles are, determine if they belong there. If they should have a sticker, they'll get a sticker. Uh, if they shouldn't be there, then they'll have to take appropriate a, action with management to have those vehicles moved.
So how many Pro Park employees would there be on any given day?
Basically, Pro Park will staff it as, as, as need be. So it could, there definitely would be a, a valet captain and at least one attendant to help move vehicles back and forth on a, on a low point.
But are there people walking around, uh, uh, in the parking lot?
The attendant could have multiple duties, or it could be a function of other, uh, facilities that he has in the area that he's managing at the same time. He might be multiple managing different properties, so you'd have, and, and you don't have to necessarily watch this every day. He can come, uh, you know, as need be, uh, from that standpoint. But Mr. Sokic is here. Uh, if you wanna hear specifically how he's done this in the past, uh, he could answer those questions too. But based on my conversations with him, he really doesn't see a problem in how he would manage that, uh, that operation.
Given the demand of people to park and use the train or go to the city, take the bus, you have to figure there's gonna be some kind of spill-over from that. Do you, do you anticipate, uh, you know, any kind of rail, um, to get into the lot? Uh, do you anticipate any, um, limitation on how long you can park there? Or do you have, you're gonna have to show a receipt when you go to a store to get in, you know, something, is there, is there?
Is there an alarm to get in and out of the lot?
No, we're not controlling, except for the deck. The underbuilding deck is controlled. It'll have a control card, a FOB issued to residents of the building, as well as to employees of the medical office building, as well as, uh, to Pro Park. You know, with regard to the west lot, basically, you know, you, you're gonna look at managing on a two-hour basis. You're not going into a grocer for more than two hours. You're not going into most of the retails for two hours. The restaurant's probably about a two-hour window, so you're gonna be looking for, uh, a turnover of about two hours. So if you're seeing people in that lot that are four, six, eight hours, we know we either got an employee there or we've got somebody that shouldn't be parked there, and then they can target that vehicle. That, that I can leave to Mr. Sokic to answer specifically how he's.
I, I think there was previous testimony by Mr. Sokic, and obviously he's here, but there was the, you know, the, it, it, there's sort of an operational policy that would need to be worked out, but it's like, you know, first, first offense, leave a note on the car. Second offense, you know, tow. I, I, you know, I'm not sure exactly, you know.
Is there gonna be a two-hour parking limit? What for employees, what, what's the game plan? Or is there not yet?
No, there's no, there's no, right now, there's no, there's just.
Right. So those are things we'll need to look for and manage. We, now, we, we don't wanna, need to have to put our limit signs all over the place. It becomes our problem to manage it, to make sure that the supply is there for our customers and so forth. Uh, and, and that's the way it would be observed and watched for those types of, uh, characteristics occurring. And if they're occurring, those, those vehicles can be targeted.
So for this lot, for the east lot, what's your, what's your peak parking time for the east lot?
For the east lot?
And how many, and how many spaces are you talking at that?
Yeah. The east lot's actually peak, uh, Saturday evening. And you're basically using the two hundred and thirty spaces between the employees parked there and the residents on-site, back on sites. So you will still have at peak, at seven P.M. on a Saturday, some retail employees there, some restaurant employees there.
All the spaces you're anticipating on Saturday, all those spaces.
Well, about ninety-five percent of the spaces, ninety to ninety-five percent, 'cause our calculation is a supply and not an actual demand, so there's a cushion in there.
What cushion of that is visitor?
Uh, the visitors of, of the.
Sorry, that.
It's hard to specifically call that out on the residents, but, uh, you know, you, you basically have fifty spaces, uh, being used by people oriented to the residents, uh, of the surface lot, so.
So you're saying that your resident number has the visitor number baked into it?
Yes.
How is that calculated?
Well, it's, it's, it's basically, uh, a, a proportion of the, uh, the residential units. It's, you know, it's, it's a percentage of it. Uh, it's baked in. I don't have the specific, I didn't break out that specific characteristic. There's a hundred and fifty-four residential buildings.
So there's two hundred and thirty spaces, did you say, in that?
There's two hundred and thirty total on the surface lot.
Okay, and that includes that block that you're valet parking, right?
Uh, yes, that is, except for the nine spaces.
And we're gonna assume, I guess, Saturday night, that valet parking isn't gonna be an issue.
Correct.
The, the office building is not gonna be in operation.
Well, that's.
Limit the hours of the medical office building.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I think it's reasonable that they probably won't be.
Seven o'clock on a Saturday night.
Seven o'clock on Saturday.
Correct.
Six o'clock on a weekday.
Okay, well, we'll.
Yeah.
Consider it. Let's just talk about Saturday first then. So, at the peak on Saturday, um, you've got a hundred and fifty, you've got a hundred and fifty-four units, uh, and you have two hundred and thirty-three in that. Um, and how many employees and other, uh, commit partners will be in that lot on Saturday evening?
So we've calculated that Saturday, we'd still have about forty-seven, uh, employees in that lot associated with the retail restaurants and restaurants. Uh, and again, we wouldn't be in a valet operation mode at that point in time because we don't need it at seven o'clock on a Saturday.
But all of the hundred spaces of each of these departments, or you just have.
Right, which is consistent with what you've been seeing at your one point one, one point oh to one point one per thousand per space.
You still have some extra space.
Correct. And keep in mind that one point oh, one point one you've been seeing includes visitor op, uh, demands.
And the other peak time was six o'clock on, during the weekday.
Six o'clock on a weekday. So the valet operation as stated in the plan would run from eight A.M. to seven P.M., uh, weekdays. And as Mr. Giosa suggested, any other time that we find that the Lackawanna and west lot were reaching, uh, capacity. Cause he threw, we wanted to discuss that because we're not sure about Saturday. Mr. Giosa thinks we need it. My numbers don't suggest we'll need it, but, uh, we may need it.
Yeah, that's a, I don't know, that's, that's a hard time for us. People are coming home from work, the, people are going to the stores before they go home. So they'll be going to the supermarket or grabbing something to eat before they go home, and then you.
Still have, sorry, thank you. Um, our vice chair isn't here. He usually gets this from me, um, or reminds me.
Restaurant jams.
The, the restaurants, you've got.
Saturday night.
The leftover from the office buildings, you've got, it's kinda like, like the perfect storm of.
People going into the city?
Yeah, but it's, it's, um.
And it's, and that's all calculated into the numbers.
Can, can we just restate this again? Is, what we were talking about was using valet parking ex- exclusively?
Exclusively for the office building.
In the east lot for the office building.
Right.
It's a long way, isn't it, for people to walk back and forth?
It is.
Yeah, that's not.
Well, it's not, it's gonna be, it's gonna be their.
Through the tunnel or.
It's gonna be their guys doing.
Yeah, I know. No, no, I know that, yeah, yeah.
And it really, you know, I, 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 I hear you about that long way, but personal, personal anecdote.
Yeah.
I was, um, in Virginia, uh, at a hos, visiting a hospital, uh, that had a huge parking lot, and they had valet parking. Uh, I use a valet parking. And the people who, where they parked my car was basically about that same distance. It wasn't that long of a wait. It wasn't that bad, 'cause the person, you know, they didn't come get my car until.
You came.
It was time for me to come down, and, you know, maybe I waited, it was less than five minutes for them to, to go out, get my car and bring it back to me.
And I think as stated in Mr. Sokic's plan, there are technology that is used too, text, text retrieval and so forth.
Right, that's, I've used that with restaurants. They said, if you, you know, five minutes before you're ready to leave, you know, send us a text or whatnot, and we'll go get your car.
Yeah, I let my kids do it. I don't have to do it.
And just two, uh, logistical questions here. So, um, in terms of the movements that would occur to access this valet lot with one or two employees, can you just go through how many cars can be valet parked here given the amount of valet support you have?
Well, we, we have, uh, a total of twenty-seven spaces here that can be valeted into, plus an additional eight. Uh, so it's, uh, twenty, thirty-five.
Or no, I mean, if there's one valet individual, would, would they then take out two of the cars of the nine parked horizontally, stage them in the parking lot, just having a sense, or would it have to be two people?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Sokic, who's a professional in that manner. Uh, you know, that type of operation, I think I should rely on a professional.
The valet is gonna have to really move, if it's just one of them, drop, dropping the cars around, you know.
And then how do you have access to the lot in the morning if there are, or is it roped off in the off-hours?
Yeah, so, so what would typically happen is, that area first of all would be used week, every weekday. So you'd start to manage it, uh, early in the morning, early in the morning, 'cause we're not gonna need all those spaces first thing. So you would manage those spaces early on by coning them off, and then, uh, as they became available, you'd become, so by the time we need them all, that area would be available to Mr. Sokic, and, you know, he'll have to adjust how that's done on a given day. But, uh, basically, that's it. We'd start to protect those spaces starting at, uh, early in the morning.
So they, all of those, uh, eighteen spaces are accessible to apartment residents.
Through the weekend.
Outside of the valet.
Outside the hours overnight through the weekend, yes.
And I would think in the mornings in particular, that they should be able to use parts of the west lot to valet park, because that, you know, during the week, in the morning, that, that lot, unless it's an extremely successful store, you know, that would be nice, I guess, for the owners, but.
Yeah, it's more the weekdays with people parking there who don't drive much during the week, and they commute to work that I'm most concerned about, but.
To be honest, we would like a little bit of flexibility to use the west lot, but, uh, but we heard you at the last meeting that you didn't want to, so. We sorta nicked that when Mr. Sokic said he could use that pretty efficiently.
I think the west lot, I think worst-case scenario, you have to show us how you can park everything on the east lot. But I think as a practical.
Well, this does that.
I would think anyway, as a practical consideration, that, um, you know, that you should be able to use parts of the west lot during lulls. Because even now, even when the stores, when the mall was fully open, in the mornings, you know, the parking lots never full. You know, and if somebody's coming in for a nine o'clock doctor's appointment, you know, then, you know, they're, they're gonna be out of there by ten o'clock, you know.
But chances are they'd park themselves and use the valet.
Yeah, that would be a self-park situation. You're correct.
Especially if they're charging for the valet.
If there's, if, right, assuming though, that, um, you know, there's, there's self-park situations in that lot. You know, if you're saying that you wanna maintain the west lot, uh, for the supermarket and for the retail, then if people going into the office building can't find spaces on that Lackawanna Plaza lot, then those cars should shift to, shift to valet park. And, you know, I don't.
Or else the other problem is they'll drive around the residential areas looking for spots, as we see with the Crosby, you know.
Right, so we need to have, we need to, 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 to really have a good understanding of how, how you're gonna manage the parking.
Well, this, this is.
Uh, without, without having the used car lot on Lackawanna Plaza.
That's fine. We can manage it, as shown on this plan, all to the east lot. We, we were proposing.
If you can, and if, what, what I'd ask you to do is show us how, show us how the parking goes at peak time. Give us, show us what spots are gonna be filled in. You've got this, this nice diagram here, okay? And we've got diagrams of the entire parking lot, okay? So at your peak, at your peak hours, where are the cars? Where, where, where are all the cars across all the lots?
What we're calculating is that basically the supply we need is what's in the, the east lot. These, these spaces will ebb and flow in terms of being filled.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna need any more than thirty-some-odd spaces to valet park.
No.
That doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense, 'cause your plan included fifteen additional spaces created by valet parking on Lackawanna Plaza.
Correct, because our intent was, and our proposal was, we wanted to be able to keep parking closer to the users. It's more efficient, obviously, not to have to drive them all the way over and, and, and use the excess spaces in the east.
So you're saying you don't really need that addition, those additional fifteen spaces?
We don't. And the end of the day, we don't. If you look at the parking management report that I prepared, we basically have enough physical spaces, as I testified to earlier, on the entire site, but we need to manage it.
But, uh, what I, what I wanna, what I'm trying to understand is, is valet parking. So when, you had said that you wanna be able to valet park on the west lot and on the east lot. When you say that, you mean valet park in existing spaces, not creating new valet, other than what you've shown here?
Correct. Other than the additional nine that we're creating for a little buffer.
We're not gonna see, you know, what you showed before with the, with valet parking and, and, and handicap spaces.
No, this will be all we need on the east lot.
Okay.
We, we were, we were proposing the spaces on the Lackawanna lot because of the imbalance of, of trying to get them all over to the east. It, it, it obviously is gonna take more effort and more manpower by Mr. Sokic and Pro Park and, uh, and, and my client to completely use the east lot and the excess spaces we have there. We, we would have preferred to try to use a little more efficiently the, the Lackawanna lot, but I think we've heard the board that you would prefer that we, we not do that. So we do have the spaces based on the calculations in the east lot. So, we do have the spaces based on the calculations in the east lot. These are the areas we would use, the underbuilding, underbuilding excess spaces. Uh, this dead end area here, as well as the remote spaces on Bloomfield, are the spaces that would be, uh, put to control by Pro Park.
Yeah, so all the totals say plus valet, indicating that valet spaces are not included at all in any of the totals?
Yeah, we don't up the totals at all, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and that, that resulted from modifying the, uh, you know, reducing the size of the building a little bit, modifying, taking the, we, we had, we, we did have fast food restaurant in some of the retail space, so after we went through all the numbers, the numbers came together, uh, very nicely.
Yes, and thinking like someone parking valet and going along these spots, I see now that the valet spots are not incremental. So, is there anything to make sure an employee of yours is not parking that whole strip of valet, instead of just the eight cars there? Or is it really just, it's kind of honor system? So where you have the eight there by the TD Bank, rather than go through the trouble of parking in the twenty-seven, they could just continue to park there, is there any thing that would keep them from doing that, or...
Well, well, it's Pro Park that's managing those spaces, so this, these are the areas that management would be giving him to work with.
Okay, so they need to work within what manage indicates, and it's, yeah, understood.
And, and this creates a very efficient area, an isolated area, uh, for Pro Park to work with.
Do you propose any signage to, indicate that that's valet parking during certain times?
Uh, we could, we didn't add that to the plan. Uh, it may not be inappropriate to just indicate weekdays, blank to blank, you know, spaces valet. Maybe it's, maybe it's actually on the valets, but maybe it's on the, on the floor. I think we can work with you, I, I, I'm not, I'm not favorable of oversigning things, so I wanna be careful with that. But I think we can work with you, uh, and see what Pro Park's done in the past to identify those spaces.
I think that would address Mr. Gilmer's issue about approaching into the parking for everybody else.
Yeah.
Right.
Or will you be numbering the spots? I mean, if you're using some kind of a smartphone application?
So, I, I, not to interrupt your question and to answer the question, but I, I feel like we're, we indicated earlier, we, we, we have Kristen Sokic here from Pro Park, actually, if I can bring him up, he's previously been sworn in, maybe he can actually speak to some of these things, uh, which I think we're getting into real valet operation here.
Right.
Well, other than the operation, have you accounted for the employees of Pro Park that will be using the lot? If you have five employees, they might need five spots.
I didn't get down to that level of detail.
So, I just, I, I know that, um, there were emails, um, between you and Mr. Giosa.
Yes.
In terms of the numbers.
Uh-huh.
Did you, and you were supposed to work it out today.
Yes.
Was that worked out to your satisfaction? Okay, just wanna make sure, all right.
Good evening Board, Kristen Sokic, uh, I've been sworn in prior. I think we can get to a very good place based on what I heard tonight. I know the board doesn't wanna make Lackawanna Plaza look like a parking lot. If you allow us to use the West Lot, that lot is gonna have ample capacity eleven out of the twelve months a year. And it will allow us to operate a lot more efficiently, um, rather than taking all the cars to the east lot on a regular basis. If we do that, I would probably only need two cars in the aisle in Lackawanna, just for state, just for drop-off and pickup. I would designate another four spaces as valet spaces, so if there's a little bit of an onslaught, I could park cars into those spots temporarily. The other twenty-six self-park spaces could stay self-park for short-term users going to the medical center or the fast food or, or whatever, wherever they want.
How about giving us a proposal?
Yeah, I can do that.
And, and giving us a proposal as to how it would function for the eleven months and then for the twelve months. But if you could give us, you know, give us an illustration of what, what spaces you're talking about using. And, you know, and, and it's the worst-case scenario that we really need to see illustrated. Because, you know, if you can illustrate that, then we can, we can back out to, to when it's not that bad.
I would also say if the public had access to the underground tunnel, the public going to the supermarket could park on the east parcel, and that would alleviate some of your problems, as we have been parking there when it was an operating supermarket.
The problem with that is the public would have to then go through the building.
I know, that's, right, exactly.
And it's a security issue.
Well...
So, I just wanna be clear, even if you get use of the West Lot for, um, those needing valet, you're still gonna funnel the employees to the east lot, is that correct?
All, all the employees would be parking in the east lot, that is correct.
All employees are gonna be told they have to park on the east lot, correct?
The retailers would park in the outdoor portion, the medical office employees would park indoors.
Restaurant, outdoors?
Outdoors.
On the east lot, he's talking about under the building or in the open?
So, all, all employees of all stores on the entire site are going to be pushed to the east lot, correct?
Anybody who's an employee will have to be credentialed and park either in the east lot or the indoor garage.
So now we're talking about visitors, either people going to the stores, people going to the medical offices, the restaurants, or to the supermarket, right?
Correct.
Now, some people are going to want valet, most likely the people going to the doctor's offices, right?
Well, the valet is only going to apply to people going to the doctor's offices.
We're not asking people where they're going, we're gonna have a valet setup in the Lackawanna Plaza Lot. The majority of those people will be going to the medical offices, just because that's where the main entrance is. Um, but if you were going food shopping and you pulled in that lot, we'd park your car.
So, I come in there and going to a store, I don't wanna valet parking, I wanna put my car right there, walk into the store, buy a battery and leave. That's, that's what I want to do, right?
So in the scenario that I just brought up, if you allow us two spots for drop-off and pickup in the aisle, and then I take another four spots to be able to manage the situation, that would be twenty-six spots for self-parkers to do exactly what you just said.
If I'm going to the medical office however, now I'm coming in there, I'm gonna be tied up for an hour. Now, I don't mind if my car is valet parked, in fact, I might even prefer it.
So look, there's gonna be folks that are gonna be there for half an hour, an hour, maybe even four hours. We're gonna ask folks how long they think they're gonna stay. Anybody that says they're staying for a longer period of time, we're gonna park their car further out.
Got it.
Anybody who doesn't wanna valet park can park in the other remaining open spaces. Once those spaces are filled, then somebody's either gonna have to valet, or they're gonna have to park someplace else.
Got it.
And most likely that's gonna be in the West Lot.
Right.
But the West Lot, though, for those people, you know, going to, going to the store, going to, should be able to accommodate
Right.
that traffic, along with what you're anticipating, who would normally park in that West Lot, correct?
If you're going to the supermarket and the stores, chances are you're gonna park in the West Lot. If you're going just to stores quickly to grab something, you probably will go to the Lackawanna spot, Lackawanna side, right?
If you're going to those stores.
If you're going to those stores, yeah.
If you're going to those stores, right.
Does that make sense?
So if you can, if you can give us a plan that shows how you intend to manage that and draw us a nice picture, because the, you know, seeing the numbers is one thing, but seeing how these spaces actually fill out.
Yeah, based on tonight's conversation, we certainly put that together and make it very visual.
You know, makes it easier, makes it clearer.
And for the west parcel as an option, you were saying, right?
And, yeah, I mean, because, being reasonable, you know, there are certain hours that we can reasonably anticipate that that lot is not gonna be full. And it is more efficient to park there, but that has, that's something that has to be managed and at least has to be defined. And maybe that definition gets refined and developed as time goes on, but at least you have, you have to have an initial plan. And you've got numbers, you've got numbers that are, are telling, that you're asking us to accept, that are showing what the usage is going to be at certain periods of time, so they should be able to illustrate.
And the nice thing about the West Lot is the spaces we would most likely utilize would be the least, uh, desirable spaces for people going to the grocery store.
Exactly.
Cause we would wanna park the cars closer to Bloomfield, the grocery store, people wanna be closer to the grocery store.
And perhaps no parking in the drive-aisles?
There'd be no parking in the drive-aisle, you wouldn't even be able to tell these are valet cars.
The only parking in the drive aisle that you're now proposing are the two spots in front of the medical drop box.
Right.
For, for dropping off and...
Correct, and then that area in the east lot if we need to go there.
And, yeah.
What happens to the guy that valet parks his car that, that comes back after hours?
Somebody comes in and, uh, they don't come back by the time we, our closing hours? We could leave a phone number where they could call and, you know, designate a pickup area, uh, with the right, like a, you know, for instance, uh, over at the residential building, we could leave it with the front door person, um, you know, or the, typically, you know, we have visible signs that basically outline that any car left after a certain hour will be locked up for the day. But, um, from a customer service standpoint, we try to make accommodations at work in the field before we get to there.
All right. Any other questions of the two witnesses? From the public?
Um, would you, in putting up the first picture you showed, it helped me understand the, the location of the valet lot better? Um, where it said Lackawanna Plaza? That, that's perfect. Um, well, silly me, I thought Lackawanna Plaza was gonna stay a bucolic site, um, because I know...
You do understand that we told them no to that?
Yeah, yeah, well, I understand.
All right.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that if we use the West Lot for valet parking, it's actually gonna involve crossing the sidewalk three times as many times as somebody parking their own car, right? Because I think in terms of stopping pedestrians, endangering pedestrians, the driver pulls in the valet lot, okay, that's the first time we stop the pedestrians on the sidewalk. The valet takes the car, the valet drives away, the valet crosses the sidewalk again. Then the valet is gonna pull in on the West Lot, I don't know, are they gonna make a left onto Bloomfield? Are they gonna make a right onto Glen Ridge?
I'm sure that there's a couple of different ways that they're gonna, that they can go, so don't, I wouldn't assume that they're just going one way.
All right, so they're going either way. Then they pull in either from Grove or Bloomfield into the West Lot, if I'm understanding that right. They cross the sidewalk again and stop the pedestrians. Then, the, the driver wants their car back, they pull out again out of the parking lot over the sidewalk, drive back in again to the original valet spot, cross the sidewalk two more times.
Can I ask you something?
Mm-hmm.
Do you drive?
I do.
How many times do you stop pedestrians when you've crossed sidewalks in the past week?
Uh, well, I haven't driven in the last week.
Okay.
And I certainly haven't driven to the supermarket.
I've driven in the past week and I've crossed the sidewalks at least, at least, four times a day. And maybe, you know, so out of the whole week, maybe I've stopped a pedestrian once.
But this is the most congested corner in the city, or one of them, and we don't have a pedestrian survey, but if six o'clock PM on a weekday is the busiest time for cars, I'm guessing that's about the busiest time for pedestrians. That's where we're going to market after school.
I've driven into that lot multiple times. I'd never stop a pedestrian going into the Lackawanna Plaza Lot. Never, never in the entire time I've done, and I drive in at least three or four times a week. I've never seen a pedestrian. And I've stopped a couple of people, but my, my point is, is that it's not like every time the car crosses the sidewalk that it's going to stop pedestrian traffic. This is not New York City midtown traffic we're talking about. This is, there, there aren't simply that many people walking, so that every time a car crosses the sidewalk, people have to stop.
But we don't really know because we never had a pedestrian survey.
But we do know, but, but, yeah, but you...
The sidewalks are teeming with people on Saturday afternoon at one o'clock, teeming.
Okay.
Up by church.
Okay.
So, I, I just wanna also ask if valet's gonna cost money? Because I know we try to give a lot of consideration for the fourth ward.
Well, that, that question was asked, and they don't know right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be brief. So, we're talking, I'm gonna actually support, uh, the previous speaker by saying you're talking about probably the most highly trafficked intersection.
You're asking a question, okay.
Well, I, I, I think basically when I lay out the facts, the question should be quite obvious. You have the dense...
No, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. You need to ask a question, so that an answer can be given.
Will you provide us, us with an, an analysis of car movements per hour during P, uh, based on different times of the day? Based on anticipated traffic patterns for people coming in doing their shopping? And then adding on top valet parking between the front, going in both directions? You're talking about a tremendous amount of moving parts. When you say that you're tr- crossing the, um, the pedestrian sidewalk, uh, into the, uh, drive-in to the lot, at Lackawanna, you're talking about a mall that's effectively empty today, but now we're talking about an entirely different situation.
Well, during, first of all, during peak time, uh, they won't be going into the western lot, they'll be parking in the eastern lot. They'll be doing valet parking on the eastern lot.
Right.
All right, and so, of course, we're only discussing the impact of the valet parking here, because we expect, uh, that there are going to be cars crossing for, for customers going into the various stores, okay? But insofar as the, the impact of valet parking during those peak times, that's when we expect the most people to be in the store also, so they're gonna be using the east parcel, which is the residential parking.
Right.
So that's, that's the sidewalk that we're talking about crossing. And it'll be once in and once out.
I just think, I, I won't use the term because we're on television, but it begins with the word cluster, and I just can't possibly imagine how this is going to be remotely safe for vehicular or pedestrian traffic, which, with all the different curb cuts where they're located, the density, the, the throughput of going Bloomfield Avenue Grocery, people not even planning on being, shopping in this area. The trucks, the loading, it just, to me...
The post office, people are such klutz.
Can I just ask you the same, here's my question, are we to suspend our better judgment and our, our basic sense of reasonability to believe all these concessions that they are proposing are all gonna add up to a completely functional situation? I, that's the question, that's my question. Are we to suspend our basic common sense and reasonability to believe that all these different tricks of the trade are gonna work?
Listen, listen, it is, it is twenty minutes after eleven, okay?
And by the way, try parking now in Montclair. Add that, oh, and let's consider the new property on Seymour Street, and how is that gonna contribute to the density?
Well, we might as well talk about the new parking decks that we're talking about.
These are all statements, they're not questions.
No, I understand, but the question is, should we suspend our, our basic sense of logic?
You're, you're being facetious at this point, we understand that.
I think it's necessary.
Or is it sarcastic, I can't remember.
No, but I think we're also close to it, we're looking at it in a binary way, I think we have to step back and look at it and say, is this, is this even remotely reasonable?
And that statement, no, that statement, I wholeheartedly agree, that we do need to step back and look at and see what's reasonable. Now, I think we will disagree on is what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. So with that said, are there any other questions from the public? Come forward.
Carrie Heller, One Greenwood. Mr. Nguyen, if you'd give me just a little latitude, I've been here in front of this board in number...
I, I hear you, Mr., I hear you, Mr., but honestly, it is twenty, it's twenty-five minutes after eleven. It has been a very long day for everybody here. Um, this is a question point, not a statement, not a declaration, so please ask your question so that we can get you an answer.
To the gentlemen who have parking analysis, I'm, I'm at One Greenwood. Uh, there's a building across the street from me that's now a club developed by a gentleman by the name of Mr. Pofker. There's another building on Lackawanna that was developed also by Mr. Pofker that has Bobby Brown. There's a studio, there's the loft, there's nighttime use. Some years ago, this planning board, the town, put the angled parking spaces in, in front of our building at our initiative. Have you done a parking traffic analysis inclusive of moving cars around at all the different hours, which there are different peak hours for this use, whether it be for the restaurant, whether it be for the medical, whether it be for the supermarket, and combining that with all the other uses? My concern, if I, if I may go, is, the concern that I have is there's no enforceability for valet, I have a little familiarity with it. There's no enforceability, whether it's east lot, west lot, or whether they even do it, as to where these cars are going to park on their own initiative if they can't get into their little lot on Lackawanna. So it's a, a multi-tiered question.
So the answer is yes, there was a full traffic impact study that was prepared and testified to at a previous hearing by myself before this board, a very comprehensive analysis. Uh, the valet parking movements will not substantially change the result of that, that traffic study. Uh, the difference here between users that rely on on-street parking in this site is we have sufficient...
is we have sufficient parking on-site. We just need to manage the location of those spaces to the users. And that's what we proposed. I believe we have a reasonable plan, we have a way of doing it. And overall, you know, based upon the traffic study and parking analysis we've done and the input from Mr. Sokic, we have a very viable and well-thought-out plan.
Do you have a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year, thirty-year, fifty-year contract to ensure that the valet parking is going to be for perpetuity?
The approval of this board, with whatever conditions they might make, run with the land.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I will beg to differ, and I will take a leave. There is no enforceability of those conditions by this board or by any code of officer. But we'll leave that for another day. Thank you.
Other questions of the witnesses? All right. We obviously didn't get to all of your witnesses this evening. When is our next meeting? That we can hear this?
Okay, well, next Monday, December third. I have no applications. We have a referral from the council.
Ding 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 ding.
And then we have December seventeenth.
Sounds like December third is the next meeting that we can proceed.
That's next Monday.
It's next Monday, it's a week from tonight.
And I think that we should try and keep pushing along with this.
Does that work? And then what's on the seventeenth?
Is there anything on that?
I have nothing on the seventeenth. They haven't submitted revised plans. Yeah, the one up there, they're asking for it to be postponed until January.
But of course, we're not. But at least we can get to the opposition.
The third it is.
Okay.
All right. So we'll...
So which, so what do you, just so I know who to make, to come on the third? Are you bringing everybody on the third?
So, well, it sounds like we have to revisit, an interesting question regarding architecture. It sounds like we have to revisit an illustration of valet for the parking. And then, most notably, we haven't gotten to our planning testimony yet, so...
Will you have enough time in one week to...
He was ready to go tonight.
Yeah. We're, we're going to do, I, I, yes, I think we can get that done. Obviously, we're not submitting ten days in advance, because...
No, yeah. Submit at the meeting. You can't submit in advance.
Right. So if we, if hopefully, we can get through those witnesses, and then that's the completion of your, your proofs. And then we can, perhaps on the seventeenth, depending on how things go next week, we can get to the opposition.
We do, we do have to do that referral from the council, so...
Well, at least we can start it, anyway. You know, we can start the opposition.
Right, right.
Do they need to be notified?
Well, we're going to have to see how things definitely go next week. But just, this is our best guess that we can give you.
And are we going to hear from our own parking expert?
We've gotten, you know, written feedback. And if we need further feedback, questions, and we want, yes, we can. Okay? But we can determine that between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, he can, I can ask him to come to the next meeting in case you have questions. But I did get copied on emails between him and the, and Mr. Penkey. And evidently, they resolved their issues, so that's why I...
Right. And if there's specific questions that you have for R., we can communicate with him, because he is our consultant. We can communicate with him between now and the next. All right.
Can we go through the next meeting, December third, without further notice?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing we have to do now is pay bills. And I know that Keith, Keith Isher brought up, reviewed them, and he didn't have any issues with the bills.
Then I move that we approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All right, thank you, everyone. See you next week, same time.